Folks, I call the meeting to order. Glad to see we have a nice group here that could make it through that little dusting that the forecasters predicted for us. I think I've gone through about eight inches of that so far.
Good afternoon and welcome to the monthly meeting of the City Des Moines Zoning Board of Adjustment. This board has the power under the Iowa law and the zoning ordinance of the City of Des Moines to hear requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, conditional use permits, and appeals from the decision of the staff and the administration of the zoning ordinance, and to make decisions on such matters. This is an open and informal meeting that's currently being recorded. The board members have received a copy of the agenda, staff report, and recommendations. Copies of this staff recommendations and agenda are available in trays to my far left. We're going to have a five-member board here. I'll introduce the members that are here. On my left, Jake Christensen. Next to him is Mel Pins. Next to him is Linda Westergaard. On my right will be Cindy Smith. Absent will be Brooke Rosenberg. And I do have one announcement. Tom Clark Sr. is absent today, but he just turned over a special birthday. It's one of those ones that end in zero, so...
He's earned it.
So if you see him, you can wish him happy birthday. Representing City Legal today, on my left is Mike Kelly. Representing City Staff, we have Eric Lundie, City Planner; Bert Drost, City Planner; Sue Ann Donovan, the Zoning Enforcement Officer; and I didn't see Manny here. Okay, so that's here. The board is required to base its decision in each case upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case is identified in the written staff report. If the facts as determined by the board demonstrate that the criteria established by law for granting the relief have been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the relief. All speakers are requested to focus their comments upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law have been satisfied. Each appeal will be announced in order, and the staff will present a brief explanation of the appeal. Any written comments received by the staff prior to the hearing will be distributed to the board or otherwise identified. All speakers are requested to speak from the podium over here on my right, and begin their presentation by giving both their name and address. The applicant or representative of the applicant is allowed to speak first, and will be allowed 10 minutes to present their appeal. Anyone else present in support of the appeal will then be allowed five minutes each to present his or her comments. Anyone present in opposition to the appeal will then be allowed five minutes each to present his or her comments. The applicant then will be allowed three minutes for rebuttal or other closing comments. The meeting will then be closed to public comment, and the board will deliberate the request and make a decision. If your appeal is approved, we ask that you wait until tomorrow to go to the Permit and Development Center to apply for any building permits. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed, and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or member of the board requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. The decisions of this board can only be appealed to the Polk County District Court. If you believe you have been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the City Council to change those regulations. All material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation will become a permanent part of the record and will not be returned. Cell phones, if you have them on, we ask that you either put them on silent or shut them off. They get to be very disruptive to the process here. We will be taking a short break around the 3:00 or 3:30 timeframe if needed, and we will have...Mr. Pins will have to excuse himself about the 2:30 timeframe for a period of time, so if we...What I'm getting to is we have a five-member board, and your decision has to get four votes to pass. And so if you want to wait until Mel returns, we'll give you that option if you're in the line to do that. Thank you. As I mentioned, with the first thing we talk is the consent agenda. We have a change on that.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Bert Drost, Planner for the City. Item number five needs to be considered as a discussion item. Staff is recommending denial of it, so that'll need to come off the consent portion.
Are they here today? Okay, good. All right. Entertained a motion, move it to the public hearing agenda?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion, I think Jake, I meant five oh. Motion carries five, so it moves to the public hearing agenda. That leaves five items for the consent agenda, and I'm going to go through those. Item one is a special permit at 1301 Locust Street. Item two is a special permit and variance at 900 Polk Boulevard. Item three is an exception at 3612 Southwest 26th Street. Item four is a variance and exception at 1111 East Army Post Road. And item six is an exception at 400 Walnut Street. Is there anybody here that's here to speak against any of those items that I just read Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the special permits, variances, and exceptions on items one through four and six as presented in the consent agenda, subject to their compliance with the staff recommendations.
Got a second?
Second.
It moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in fa...
I'm just going to abstain from number three.
Number three, okay. So all those in favor for everyone except item three?
One, two, four, and six.
Yes. Raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries...You can vote on those. Five to nothing. And then item three, all those in favor, raise your hand. Four to nothing to one abstention. Okay? Bert, we've got a couple requests for continuances.
We do have two requests for continuance. Number seven and number nine...Number nine. Number seven is Michael Cortez at 7695 Southeast 14th Street. He wants a continuance to the May 22 meeting. He's proposing a garage. This week he came in, and he's actually withdrawing his request for a special permit for the home occupation, as well as the three variances that were necessary for that special permit. So he's only going to be asking for the exception to the maximum height of the building. So that probably will change our staff report some. And he'd also mentioned that the engineer designing the garage had passed away, so he does need a little more time to find a new engineer and to get revised drawings, so...
Hey, hold on Bert, I forgot to...
He's here.
If you guys were here for...The items on the consent agenda that we just voted on, they've all passed, so you're more than welcome to sit around and watch your city government at work, or you can...You're free to leave and battle your way through this dusting of snow that we just got. Thanks Bert, sorry.
Yeah, so if you want to hear from the applicant, I know he's here, so if you can...
Can I ask Bert a question?
Sure.
So basically Bert, we're taking away all the variances for the home occupation. He'd still want to just build a building that's too tall?
Correct.
Okay. Okay?
And we want to go till May?
He wanted three months to the May 22 meeting.
Okay. You want to bring the applicant?
Mike.
Yeah, just give us your name and address.
Michael Cortez, 7695 Southeast 14th Street.
And you want to go, wait until May?
Yeah, I've had a house fire, and I've got a lot of stuff building on the house and everything still. So there's just a lot of stuff going on right now, so I'd like to just wait to do this at another time.
Okay. Before we go on, is there anybody here to speak against items number seven? Usually we give them a chance to talk if you're going to get a continuance, and I don't see anybody. Okay. Entertain a motion to grant continues to the May...what meeting?
22.
22, okay.
Move the item and continue to the May 22 meeting.
I'll second.
It moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Do we...Do you think we need to re-notify that part down the road?
Let's do. That's probably the best thing.
And then we'll take out all...
Okay. Then we'll see you May 22nd. Item nine?
Item number nine, the request for a special permit for home occupation at 1521 East 22nd Street is also requested continuance. Mr. Ari, the business owner, would...He's at jury duty this week, so I believe his attorney's here if you want to ask him any questions.
Okay. You want to come up and just request a continuance?
If we may have a continuance for a month. Like Mr. Ari is in jury duty right now, so...
He's what?
Jury duty.
Jury duty.
It was his last week that he was up, and he got him panned Monday morning.
Okay.
It was his last week of his month.
And also for the record, can I get your name and address?
Sure. Brian Nelson. My address is 300 Walnut, Suite 125, and that's Des Moines down here, 50309.
Okay, entertain a motion to continue, and you just need one month, right?
Yes.
Well, as it's difficult to get out of jury duty anymore, I would be happy to propose a motion to postpone this to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Which is when, Bert?
March 27.
March 27?
Of March 27.
Okay, you hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to nothing. We'll see the 27th.
Thank you, guys.
Go to the public hearing agenda, and we'll pick up with item five. Item five is an exception in the vicinity of 1,000 Thomas Beck Road.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, item number five is a request for an exception to the number of off-street parking spaces that they're required to provide. The businesses proposing, or the property owners proposing to convert the building to a fitness center use, where there would be softball, training, speed and agility training. As you just said, there's another person who wants to request a continuance for a future...I have another item.
Okay, who...
Should we do that now? I'm going to skip the meeting.
I didn't know. Number eight, okay.
Lloyd Ogul, probably is not coming up sooner. I represent IMN LLC, which is asking for a conditional use permit for their liquor store they have. We would just really appreciate to have a full board to hear this. It's really important to them. It's a family-run business, and we'd appreciate the opportunity to speak before a full board.
Well, we thought we'd have a full board this month, and so there's no guarantee that we'll ever have a full board. So this will be the second, if we grant it, be the second continuance, and, you know, hopefully we will have a full board, but let's see what the board says. So you want to request continues to March 27?
Yeah, and my understanding, there's no staff objection to it.
We do have five of us here now, and we will until about 2:30, and we're ready to hear your item. Well, I...No, he's eight, right?
Eight.
Is there any way we can time it yet today? So I probably need 30 minutes at 2:30, and I'd be okay?
We prefer a full board, but I mean, it's obviously your discretion.
We could be down two next month, within hours. It just depends.
Just wanted to let you know that it's not in our best interest to keep continuing, continuing, continuing.
No, I'm just hoping with the weather and whatnot, my understanding, usually you do have a full board.
The weather doesn't affect if we have a full board or not.
Is there anybody here to speak against item eight? Okay. Well, I don't like it, but I'll entertain a motion.
Is there any way we can say this is the last...If we've given two, we don't give three?
Now, that was my thought, that our continuance...
Mike, you got any thoughts on that?
Well, I think if there's cause and it's presented to the board, you could get a continuance of some of it.
Okay.
Okay. Well, let's move on whether we want to give them one this month. I'll entertain a motion to continue this to the March 27 meeting.
I'll move for a continuance to the March 27.
In good faith, I'll second that then.
It moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries five to nothing.
Understand.
Okay, you know what we're saying. Thank you. Sorry, Bert.
That's okay. Back to number five, 1,000 Thomas Beck Road. The applicant is proposing to convert the...It's currently a warehouse use. They're wanting to convert it to a fitness center use. The proposed use would require 54 off-street parking spaces.
Bert, which building is it that they're going to convert?
It's this building here. They're really...It's next to McGray Park, to the...I guess McGray Park's to the east. Thomas Beck Road, it's on the north side. Gray's Lake Park is across Thomas Beck Road to the north, so here's the site sketch that they've submitted. And the use that they're proposing requires 54 off-street parking spaces. They're proposing to only provide 30 off-street spaces, including 22 in the existing lot, and then they would be paving this area here to provide eight additional parking spaces. Here's a picture of the building. Another view. One more from the other angle. So the proposed eight spaces that they would be adding would be located in this area here to the south of the building. Consent map, we did not get any comment cards, either in support or in opposition, so... At first blush, staff didn't see any issues with this. We, in fact, put it on the consent agenda, but after looking into it further, we did have some concerns that this type of business can generate large groups of people congregating at once. There's another...A couple other such facilities in the metro that we are aware that have parking issues and create parking issues and congestion on the adjoining street. So we looked at the site. It looks like this area here could be developed for parking, so it's not like they don't have the area to add parking. I just think they're not wanting to go to the expense at this time to provide parking. I know they believe that 30 spaces is all that their business model is going to require, but just from the angle that the staff, we are concerned that it could generate large groups of sports teams or multiple sports teams at once assembling on the site, so we have recommended denial and feel that they should provide all 54 off-street parking spaces required. Any questions?
I have a question. Do you know, is parking allowed on Thomas Beck Road?
I believe it is.
I don't think so. I've never seen a car parked there. There is.
No.
I wasn't sure if there's a curb in this area, if they could park off the side.
Bert, did...I recall a year or so ago, we had something similar, or if it was in the same ear location, or...
The same property came to the board a year or two ago. They were going to convert it to an outdoor volleyball...
Yeah.
...complex that didn't pan out.
What did we allow them then?
They were...Well, there wasn't a parking issue then. Since it was outdoors, sports courts, they required a lesser parking requirement, so...
Was this the same appellant or party, or do we have different...
Same property owner, I think, a different business owner.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions for staff?
Just one quick one. Bert, in your review of this, what I would see when I see softball slash agility training, I would think kind of low density. They're going to be in there doing pitching, coaching, and stuff like that. We're not going to have somebody on a fitness machine every four feet.
Right. And yeah, they have fitness equipment in just this small area, the corner, but...
However, in your review, was it more listening to what they proposed or what you've seen with other facilities?
Kind of what we've seen happen with other facilities, where whole groups, a whole softball team will come to the site at once, and there could be parents coming and going, and we just felt it has potential for creating traffic.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So are there other sites in Des Moines?
Just one, Champions down on like 5,000 Block of Park Avenue. I know that's a bigger facility that has indoor basketball and volleyball courts. That has caused parking problems for the neighboring properties, but again, it's just...That's just staff's recommendation.
Bert, the 22 spaces, were those associated with the original configuration of the building?
Yeah.
And was that...I mean, like it shows here, the office that's in place, I assume that's existing. Was the balance manufacturing, or what was the balance?
I think it was just a warehouse use, maybe a processing or manufacturing use.
Was this the color ink or something used to be in there?
Benskin printing.
Okay.
Yeah. The fitness sport use, we consider it an assembly use, which requires one space per 150 square feet. So if you consider retail, would only require one for 200 square feet, and office is one for 400 square feet. So the use by its nature does require more parking.
But that's where fitness center space. And so you took the softball space and considered that...
Considered it an assembly space.
Considered that as a fitness center space.
There's no subcategories or anything. You consider athletic training to be fitness centers.
Right. And that's what Eric was mentioning, it's interchangeable, so if you would allow this to go in as the softball facility, who's to say next year they will convert to a fitness, an entire fitness area centered with all fitness equipment in it, so...
Okay. And then if that happens and people park everywhere, the most you could do is cite them for improper parking?
Exactly.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks, Bert. Applicant or representative of the applicant?
Good afternoon. I'm Alan Van Gundy with Simonson and Associate Architects, 1717 Angersaw, here in Des Moines. Also here today is Carla Walton, who's the owner of Jock Sports, who would be the user in the building, as well as Marty Benskin, who owns the property. You already started to touch on some of the things that I was going to lead into. Obviously, we're requesting the exception for the parking spaces. We appreciate the city's need to categorize basically different uses for parking requirements in the city, but as you're well aware, there's certainly uses that don't fit nicely into those categories, and we feel that this is definitely one of those situations. I guess kind of case in point, we're being classified as a fitness facility, and even a fitness facility doesn't seem to have its own category for parking within the ordinance. It's kind of in that assembly hall lumped category. So, you know, there's just not a category for everything, and we're definitely not a snap fitness, a 24-hour fitness use. Carla will come up here in a little bit and explain a little bit more about his actual business, but I just wanted to, again, review with you the spaces that are in the building. There's the existing office space, which is right here. There's a space that's carved off in the back of the building for storage, and then the remaining space in the building, which is approximately 8,000 square feet, is entirely open. I have a couple pictures here inside the building. I'll share these with you as well. So this is looking toward the front of the building. The walled-off area is the office area. And then the windows to the left in that image are where we had dashed off a little area on the plan for the fitness, the fitness space. And that would be an area where there might be a couple treadmills and so forth, just to kind of warm up and facilitate the rest of the program that goes on in the larger space. And then this is inside the building, looking the other direction at the storage area. So you can see that the use here is intended to be agility training, batting cages, softball practice. Carla will go into a little bit more of that, but definitely different than exercise equipment and fitness machines. So with that, I'd like to introduce Carla Walton and let him say a few words about his operation.
Good afternoon. Basically...
Before you go too far...
Sorry.
I need your name and...
Oh, Carla Walton.
And your address.
701 Thornton Avenue.
Thank you.
Sorry. As he said, my facility isn't intended for actual, you know, fitness training as an Aspen or YMCA. Mine is designed for youth sports. Various teams come in. I allow hour and a half block schedules. I never have more than one team in there with no more than 12 kids and two coaches, so a maximum of 14. Basically, as he stated earlier, the only thing we would have is team pitching, team batting, maybe some kids doing some speed work on the side. There are other facilities that are much bigger than ours, as he stated. Champions, Sportsplex West, bigger variety. Ours is not even close to that size. We are more on a smaller scale. So, you know, the parking, the 22 spaces is more than enough in our minds. I never had more than eight cars in my parking lot at a time. That's weekends and weekdays as well, so ours is, you know, again, ours is designed for more of youth sports, then more of the fitness aspect for a large group.
Can you tell us your hours of operation and days of operation?
I'm open seven days a week. I'm in there as early as 8 to 10 in the evening, and I schedule teams, as I stated, references today. I will have a team in there from 3:30 to 5:30, and it's probably about seven girls from the high school, and then so on from that, 5:30 to 7, and then 7 to 8:30. I never put more than two teams in a building at once. It's one team at a time.
Well?
Yes.
Mr. Walton, it sounds like this is something you're doing here now at this location?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And how long have you been operating here?
Roughly since right after Thanksgiving.
Okay. And do you have other professional experience with this? Is this your trade or career?
Yes, I played four years in my league baseball, so I'm also the hitting instructor as well as the owner.
Okay, all right. Have you been doing this somewhere before you started this up last November?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Just some local, you know, local little sports clubs. Grand Slam over at Champions, and then another facility in West Des Moines.
So that's how you've built your clientele or your rapport, by kind of networking with local teams and...
Yes, sir.
All right.
I just want to point a clarification. The fitness area, that's not for people to just sign up like you would at Aspen or some fitness place.
No, ma'am.
So that's not like a separate little area where a member would come in. That's...
No, ma'am.
The intent is for the softball players or the baseball players to warm themselves up before they go into the game.
Warm up, get on a bike. Yes, ma'am.
Sure.
Makes sense.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just a logical one. Parking seems to be the issue.
Yes.
And, you know, be honest as possible, do you ever have people having to park in the grass or trying to pull off the curb on Thomas Beck, or do they all fit in your lot?
They all fit in the lot.
Okay.
Some of them don't even go around the backside.
Okay.
Never, almost never.
All right.
Good call, Mel.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Is there any last questions for staff?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mel. This is Bert. Got a question.
All right, Bert. Here's the deal. I fully understand where you guys are coming from on this, and I don't like scope creep if we approve one thing and then they suddenly put in 30 Nautilus machines or whatever, and my wife starts going there, then we got all kinds of issues and people parking everywhere. But can there be a way that we could construct something like this to make it simple enough to where it's not a burden for you all, but we give enough restrictions?
You could recommend that any approval be subject to the business operating in accordance with the business model presented.
Okay, without saying what that model was, without saying, well, it's just for you, coaching, pitching, and...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, rather that way, it couldn't convert to an Aspen... Yeah, rather, that way it couldn't convert to an Aspen fitness without having to provide the off-street parking.
Okay, yeah, if we start hearing about monthly memberships, then, you know, I'm going to be concerned, so. Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks, Bert, close the public portion, go to board decision then.
I want Mel to make a motion, because I think we're thinking, I'm thinking the same way.
I'd like to find a good tenant or client for this building. I know, it sounds like the owner's been trying to get something figured out down here. And Thomas Beck is a nice street, there's been some good reuse down there over the years. I don't like to see things sit vacant like that. I also don't want to see anything, again, that scope creep. But I'd put out a motion then, in this case, to approve the requested exception, so long as the appellant understands that the use will only be for those athletic training and team activities that were presented as evidence to the board here today.
And can, can it be, I know that our decisions go with the land and we're putting some limitations. I just don't want this guy to, to say, well, he's going to do something different, and then somebody else comes in, because my fear is, is that's such a huge place that it could become really overwhelming, so.
If the use is with what we presented today, and no offense to Mr. Walton, but if, but if he goes away and then, I don't know, Nolan Ryan wants to start up a pitching clinic, I don't think I care.
The only thing I.
I think I more care about the use, I think I kind of understand what you're getting at. If we just, you know, if we limit to him, then I think Mr. Benskin's going to have to come back. If he want to have a different pitching coach come in.
The only thing, you know, I'm pretty easy to get along with this on this. But, you know, I'm thinking, as a business owner, why would I be turning business away if I didn't have any park? You know, I would think that in my business model, I'm going to take a look and say, well, these people drove on by, they couldn't find a place to park. They aren't going to want to come to see me anymore. So, I think it'd be almost self-policing, I would want to put some parking out there. But, I mean, it's just my thoughts on the process.
But he's the tenant, and it really is up to the owner.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so that's why I said, if we want to put in what Mel's thoughts are, I'm good with that. Sue Ann, you want to?
Chair, board, just from an enforcement standpoint.
And you are?
I don't have a zoning enforcement officer.
Thank you.
If you could put some sort of, sort of, something in the order that said that if parking became an issue and was expanding onto the unpaved portion, there's a lot of land back there that they could start to pull off back in there, and it could become an issue for us, that the zoning enforcement officer can bring this back for reconsideration.
How's that sound? That's something I like.
I kind of, I kind of thought of that, but even since we weren't doing a conditional use permit, I wasn't sure if we can kind of write it quite that way, but, okay. All right.
So, with what Sue Ann said.
Yeah, so I still make the motion to grant the exception, so long as the use is generally for athletic training in accordance with what was presented today as evidence for the intended use. And if there are any problems with any illegal improper parking, the zoning enforcement officer can bring that back to us for our review.
Okay.
Is that?
You guys good with that? I think it's a pretty, pretty fair exchange here, so. All right, got a motion on the floor?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five to nothing. We drive by and see that fine facility in operation then, thank you.
Good salesman.
I think we're up to item 10 now, Bert? Item 10 is an exception at 1530 Woodland.
This item is a, it was originally built as a single-family house, later converted to seven dwelling units. And now the applicant is proposing to convert it to a restaurant on the main level and one dwelling unit on the upper level. The subject property is located on Woodland Avenue, just across from the Hoyt Sherman Place, next door to the Woodland Avenue Brickstones. It's a, there's also a multifamily residential adjacent to the west. The proposed use requires 11 off-street parking spaces for the restaurant and the one dwelling unit. They are not, or they're proposing to have zero off-street parking spaces. Just given the size of the property and the terrain, there's a pretty big slope from the front of the site to the back of the site. And if they were to put in any parking, it would have to, the parking would be required to meet the ADA requirements, which they would have a very difficult time meeting, given the slopes of the site. So, they're proposing to have zero off-street parking spaces, where, so all the customers coming to the restaurant have to park on street. It would be similar to the Cafe de Scala use, a couple blocks to the west. They don't have any off-street parking either. It's owned RHD Residential Historic District, which has special provision that any appeal of the off-street parking requirements can be considered as an exception rather than a variance. So, that's why this is on the agenda as an appeal for an exception of 11 spaces less than the required 11. Normally, you'd look at that and say it should be a variance, but in this case, it can be considered as an exception. And then the second component of the appeal is for an, please zoom up, please. An exception of five feet less than the required 10-foot side yard setback. And they're proposing a handicap accessible ramp from the sidewalk along Woodland Avenue to the business. And that ramp would be within five feet of the side property line, required to have a 10-foot setback. You can see from the sketch, this is what they're proposing, Woodland Avenue to the north. The main level of the dwelling would be the restaurant, the upper level would be the dwelling unit. And here's the elevation. This has been to the city's Historic Preservation Commission, and they did grant approvals last fall for this, so. You can see on the side elevation, this is the ramp that provides the handicap accessible access from the front sidewalk. And you can also see the slope to the rear that would make it impossible to degrade. It just wouldn't work to have a ramp in that area. Here's a picture of the house as it appears today. You can tell from that previous elevation that they are proposing significant changes and improvements. And here's the, the backside, and then they can send map. We just got a comment card and a letter and an email of support from the Sherman Hill Neighborhood Association, so I can pass these around.
This brook there, don't you?
Yeah. But we do feel they've demonstrated the criteria necessary for granting an exception. We feel that this would be an appropriate use in the Sherman Hill area, which does include a mix of businesses such as the restaurants. So, we've recommended approval, just subject to a few conditions. Two conditions. One, that any improvements shall be in accordance with the certificate of appropriateness as issued by the Historic Preservation Commission. And to any additions or building modifications, must comply with the building code and receive the necessary permits. Any questions?
I'm assuming that signage for the restaurant falls in line with that appropriateness as well?
Yeah, any signage would have to go to the historic commission for approval.
They'll have more, be more, have more scrutiny than we ever would, I think.
And Bert, has there haven't been any issues at Cafe de Scala, has there?
Not that I'm aware of.
So, off-street parking's not offensive in that area?
Okay, is de Scala where Chattanooga used to be?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I think in the Sherman Hill area, there used to have a parking shortages.
Free-for-all. Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Bert, applicant or representative of the applicant?
Applicant's not here?
They must be confident. You haven't, they don't see them out of there.
Will, can I ask Bert a question?
Sure.
Will, will you be talking to the applicant when this is all done, or do they just get a written thing?
Jason Bensin, he's staffed to the Historic Preservation Commission, he's been working with them.
Okay. Because one question I was going to have for them, obviously, if you've got a restaurant, you're going to have employees, maybe three or four. They're going to need to park too. They might want to talk to the Hoyt Sherman Place about working out a deal to rent some parking space, especially during the business day when that lot's not used very much.
Or during snow ordinance time?
Or during snow ordinance time. And I was just going to suggest that to them, because even though parking, you know, parking's always tight. And the more cars on the street when they don't have to be, the more congestion.
Is this part of the snow ordinance?
It is one of the.
It's part of the new, yeah, yeah.
Sherman also has an appeal, they don't meet their parking requirements.
Oh, really?
They don't really have any to give officially, they can have a shared arrangement.
I'm related to a person who used to work there, but I don't have a conflict of interest, because I don't work there anymore.
Questions, I don't know if you know the answer or not, Bert, but I was just wondering what kind of restaurant, what kind of hours? Is it, they play, being open until 2:00 in the morning, or? Any ideas? Or is it a little tea shop?
I'm not sure what type of restaurant it's.
Is there anybody here to speak in, in support of this? Anybody here to speak in opposition? I'm not used to having an applicant out here.
On both.
Especially because it's not in the consent. Okay, any last questions for staff? I think we still vote on this, so. Hearing none, we'll close the public portion, go to board decision.
I'm going to move staff, with the support of the Neighborhood Association and the Historic Preservation Commission, I feel, feel okay about.
Lost in your neck of the woods, too, isn't it?
Well, it's, you mean, close to the hospital?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's close to the hospital. I, I like the idea that they're going to make all these nice improvements to it. I like the, putting a ramp in to, for accessibility. It would, it would have been nice to have the owner here, but.
Yeah, we could have got some questions.
They must have had jury duty or something.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye? Motion carries five to nothing. I'd point to them and say, you can go get your permits, but they aren't here. Item 11. It's a special permit in the vicinity of 3422 Beaver.
Do we have some cards?
Yeah. One of them, because there wasn't enough on the cards to go.
Oh, okay.
This request is for a farmer's market seasonal event, basically, that's allowed under the special provisions of the zoning ordinance, including any signage that's related to that. The site we're talking about is the Boson Forest property, and includes multiple parcels that even have frontage on the cul-de-sac on Amick Avenue. They did provide a schematic of their, how they want to operate and their layout. It's kind of hard to read on this. There's labels, this says customer parking here, which is their paved parking lot to the north of the forest shop. They're showing some handicap parking area here, which currently is undeveloped parking. They're showing a stage area for live bands, live music in the yellow. The green area would be the actual merchandising or vendor area. And then this blue pasture area over here with access coming in from Amick would be used to store for the parking of the vendors' vehicles and trailers during the market. If you want me to, I can pass that around, or I can leave it up here if we need to refer to it. I guess I'll leave that up to you, because it might be difficult for you to interpret from where you're sitting.
I have a question, if it's not too early. Where's, where's the Beverdale Farmer's Market been before?
We approved it a year ago to.
By the, it was in the park.
At Beverdale Park, which is on the east end of Adams.
And didn't we approve that for so many years?
Yes. And so, you'll have to ask the operator what their basis is for changing to this location or looking at this location. I don't believe that our parks department is booting them out necessarily, but maybe it's not working for them to be in that location. Just to give you a little bit of visual, and those aren't very good lighting, I guess, but this is the area that is kind of the undeveloped parking area. They have some relief that was granted previously to allow that to be used for the floral business. This is looking more at the north side of the site, this is kind of the developed parking area that serves the forest shop. And I don't think Jason took any pictures of the rear area. I think one of the biggest concerns that we have is related to sound and the disruption of sound to the neighbors immediately to the south. So, when you look at the map, you can see that they back right onto single-family dwellings here on Ovid on the south side, and then to the west on Amick, and that cul-de-sac. With bands being located in that, that area.
Whereabouts?
Projecting to the west, it probably does project some sound towards the neighborhood versus towards the street where there'd be more ambient sound. They would have to follow any noise provisions in our code and take out the proper permits. But this being commercially zoned, there's actually higher tolerances. And if anyone has questions about that, I'm going to let Sue talk to that, because she's more first in the enforcement of that provision. So, I do want to warn you that in the residential area where you approved it previously, the allowance for sound was much lower threshold, because it was a residentially zoned area. This would allow a little higher, unless you restricted it down in some fashion as part of the special permit. Other concerns we have are with the amount of parking that would occur on this site and around. You know, we really aren't very supportive of this being perpetually undeveloped parking if it's going to be used extensively for parking. And then this would add to the use of that, I think it was originally, it was originally there for those peak times of the year when people had to pick up flowers or that type of thing. So, it worked out that it wasn't used very often. But this would definitely start using that more. The hours of operation will be critical to the situation, too, because, again, we don't want this spilling into evening hours where bands would be playing and possibly presenting an impact to the neighbors. Right now, they're proposing it, I believe, on Tuesday evenings once a week during the months of June through September. They are asking for the five years that's in the special permit allowance, you can grant up to five years, or you could ask that they come back every year. That's up to the board's discretion, but you could grant them up to five-year period with your approval. And they are asking for that. We want to make sure that the conditions would include that they shall only operate once per week, and they could conceivably shift that if Tuesday's not working, they could flip it to Thursday or Wednesday or whatever. I know that they try to not compete with other small farmer's markets in the metro, so it may have to change. Once a week from 4:30 to 7:30, limiting it to the months of June through September. And then we would recommend that the permit be valid for a five-year period to end in February 2018. And then they can request a new permit for another five years at that time, if they're still wanting to stay in this location. We want them to comply with Article 4, Chapter 14 of the Noise Ordinance, with outside speakers and amplified sound limited to compliance with what's a type E sound permit, which is a background type noise level, which is more appropriate for a residential area. So, and again, if you want to know the exact science of that, I would have Sue come up and elaborate on that. And then the special permit shall be subject to reconsideration if there's issues based. And then the special permit shall be subject to reconsideration if there's issues, basically. So we want to build that provision in there so that if it becomes a problem for that neighborhood, it can be brought back whenever that needs to happen.
We had that on the previous one, too, didn't we?
I believe so. It, it's not standard language for special permits, but we often build that provision in. It's in the home occupation part, but it's not in other special permitted uses don't necessarily have that provision.
And to my knowledge, unless you guys have heard something different, I, there hasn't been any complaints from it being in Beverdale Park.
I don't believe we have. I'll let Sue speak to that. If that wasn't something that would.
I, I, yeah, I would like to know.
She's had to deal with a few things here or there.
Chair of Boards, Sue Ann Donovan, Zoning Enforcement Officer. I don't recall any complaints regarding the farmer's market in the park. At this site, we would like to restrict sound if they're going to have live music down to a Class E. Sort of a 65 DBA measured at the property line, so it's not blaring at 80 DBA at the property line of the residence. That should protect them from undue sound during a farmer's market event.
And can you point to the property line where we would be measuring it at?
Depends on where they put the stage.
Okay.
So whatever, any property line, really, but we're most concerned with direction of sound because it travels out like water, sort of.
If you can see, there's actually a zoning line that goes through the property, so technically, these are residentially zoned properties within their own site. My guess is that the people that go out and do the monitoring.
Any other questions for staff?
No. I don't know if this was mentioned. I might have missed it, but the permit that was already issued for the park, was that issued for just one year or five?
I think we allowed it for, for five.
Yeah, and if they wanted to move, then they'd have to come and reapply.
Is that how we did it?
Well, yeah, you only approved it for that location.
Right, but you're.
But I don't think you limited it down in years. I don't think.
Okay, so you're pretty certain it was a five-year run?
The biggest concerns there were the, more of the traffic constraints of traffic through the area.
Yes.
So could they have, could they have two farmer's markets? Could they still have something?
Technically, yes. Yeah, technically, yes, unless you ask, I don't know if you can ask them to withdraw that necessarily.
I mean, to me, that's, we're leaving it kind of.
They did exercise the relief granted to them, but I suppose that there is a provision in the ordinance if they didn't operate for a period of time that that would go away under that, under that approval. So this upcoming summer, though, I think technically, if you grant this, and I don't know how you would grant a condition on this one that the other one would be invalid necessarily, but.
Is it the same?
Unless you get them to agree, agree to them. I'm not sure. It's, it's not technically the same entity, but I don't know if it's the same group.
But one's not related to the other.
Different entity name, but.
For, for our decision-making, I don't think one is related to the other, then.
No, and we'll get more into it.
No, we'd base, make this decision based on what we see here.
We'll let the applicant speak to that, whether that, what the relationship is between the two entities that were created for that, so.
Yeah, because I know there was what you hear in the neighborhood.
But yeah, technically, the question would be, could they? And I would say yes, unless you wanted to take an action, and we could request that be brought in front of you next month to repeal your previous allowance for that, if you were that concerned about it.
Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Eric. Applicant, Representative the applicant?
Chairman, members of the board. Kenneth Camling, resident at 3310 Adams Avenue and representing the Beverdale Farmer's Market. We are planning to move the market from the park, where we do currently have a permit to operate, to the site here next to Bosin's Forest. Reasons being, the park is a beautiful location. We had a great time at the park, had no problems with Parks and Rec Department or anything like that. However, for our patrons and for the vendors, we want to find a location that has better visibility and is easier access for them all. So the park, being located where it is at the dead end of Adams Avenue and dead end of 34th Street, it's very difficult to get in and out of. It's also very difficult to find. We found that people, that residents that were coming to the area, to the farmer's market, that lived maybe five blocks away, had no idea that Beverdale Park even existed there. So it's in such a dead-end area that nobody really gets access to there, and people that even go down the bike trail just adjacent to it don't know it's there because it's a ravine that separates it. So one nice thing the farmer's market did do, and we've noticed, and 3310, if you notice, is directly across the street from the park. Since the farmer's market has been there, more and more people come there on the weekends to use the park, walk around with families, take dogs out, hopefully on a leash. But, so it has opened up and let the neighborhood and area people know that the park is there for their use and has a very nice facility for them. So there's nothing to do with the park or the site, other than some of the areas are limited accessibility for handicap access. Some of the areas are separated by a curb to get onto the grass. So we had to purchase a ramp to try and make it as accessible as we could. Some of the areas in the park are left to natural grading, so there's some roots, and there's some places where it's the the grading is kind of washed out and such. So we have some issues with that. And also mostly with the parking and the accessibility of getting there from driving on the two dead-end streets. The Bosin lot, most of the areas we're looking at putting the vendors on is nice and flat. There's some grading and some terracing in the, in the lots. We think we can avoid that and work around that with the vendor placement. There's plenty of paved parking. We think, depending on where we limit the parking to, anywhere from 30 to 50 spaces unpaved on the north side of the Bosin's building, which they have offered full use of during our market hours. And then I suppose any of the legal adjacent street parkings. All the streets, Amick, Ovid, Euclid to the north, they all have no parking on at least one side. So if there was parking on the city streets, there would be one side, no parking. I know last year during the, when we had at the park, we asked for no parking, a special permit for no parking on one side of Adams Avenue to ensure there was no congestion there, and there was always room for traffic to pass through. I guess as far as speaking to the site layout, you had some questions about where the sound would be. Back to this picture here. We have the yellow box, which is going to be our seating, basically just tables and chairs for people that buy food from the prepared food vendors to be able to sit down, have a drink, and socialize. And this is also where the live performers would be. We plan on putting the performers, if we can, either in the middle or on the south side of this rectangle facing the Bosin complex. So any noise that we do produce goes towards the Bosin building instead of towards the residence. If we can't point them there, we are definitely going to try and point them to the, I suppose that'd be to the west, on the length of the lot, rather than towards the residence as best we can. All of our sound performers that we've had have been, I think 90% or more have been acoustic, so no amplified sound. There's only been maybe four or five that we had perform last year that had amplified sound, and even then, we're not talking stage with drums and full, anything like that, more like an acoustic, amplified guitar, maybe something like that. Nothing hard rock or anything like that. That should be very offensive to the residents. The vendor area, like I said, would be here, and basically just rows of vendors going north and south is what we had planned. The handicap parking in the blue rectangle, we're planning on probably getting rid of because it's such an undeveloped parking lot and it is gravel and just dirt. We're probably going to try and move that someplace onto the paved area for ease of accessibility and maybe put other vendor locations out there on that, in that undeveloped parking lot. I believe that's it, as far as my proposal. I think I've answered all the questions I had heard you talking about.
Cindy?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
One is, what about restroom facilities? And the other is, there was quite a few comment cards from folks that there's, it's, there's a lot of litter now. They're not excited about future litter problems and noise problems, so I don't know. I mean, you probably can't address the existing litter issues now with the Bosin's facility, but there are some pretty strong concerns from the neighbors. And I don't know if you've had an opportunity to review those cards, but.
We've seen, so we haven't seen the cards. We've had a few emails come to our website. We've had three total. One person just asked for more information. They have some concerns, and one of our members from our board is going to contact them. I don't know how that went. I didn't hear anything back from that, rather. A second person did not like it for concerns of litter and the parking concerns. I believe we have a solid plan for parking availability. And as far as litter in the park, we made sure that members from our board and our volunteers stayed. We provide trash cans throughout the market, that we provide trash cans and liners with lids, so nothing should be blowing around. We had no complaints while we were in the park from Parks and Rec Department or neighboring properties. We did, I feel we did a very good job of managing that there. There is a fence line that separates the Bosin lot from all the adjacent properties on the south side. So hopefully, any trash that would blow there would get stuck in the fence, and we'd be able to collect it before it actually got into their properties. Obviously, can't prevent any freak weather events where we had strong winds or anything like that, but if there was, we would make the effort to go in and retrieve anything that was from our event from getting onto their, into their property. The sound event, as you spoke, if you want to limit how much sound we are allowed to have to whatever we had when we were in the park, we would have no objection to that. That's as much as we want in the future, as much as we had in the past, is all we're looking for.
And what about restroom?
Restroom facilities. We are planning on renting, if, if it doesn't work with Bosin to use their facilities, we are going to rent porta-johns.
And those would be placed where?
Those would be placed up probably close to the, we haven't got a spot actually firm at Bosin, but I'm thinking near this white square on the back, kind of course, the backside of their loading dock. So away from a residential property, somewhere on, somewhere on firm level ground. It would have to be on one of the paved surfaces.
And those would be put in and removed every week?
We'd have to talk to when those would come in, potentially. We'd have to talk to whoever we're going to rent them from and find out if we have to do it as a they set up for the season, or if they just bring it in a week-to-week basis. We haven't ironed out those details yet. We want to make sure we have a plan for the site, and we're going to be there before we start getting into a lot of some of these finite details. Then we have a plan. Like I said, we're going to do porta-johns or use the Bosin restrooms. We plan on doing porta-johns, so we're self-sufficient. We don't have to rely on the Bosin to have their facility open to us. And we will have it somewhere on the paved facility up close to, closer to the Bosin building than towards the residential line.
My question is, is I'm concerned about the vendors parking coming down Amick because when, when it was presented to us from the city, they said that the vendors would be parking, be using this area that looks to be in blue. I don't believe that's paved, is it?
It is not.
So are we going to have, I mean, vendors come in with their, their trucks and their trailers and, and, I mean, there's no, I don't see how there, there's not much parking on Amick. That's a pretty short street. I'm concerned about them parking on, on grass, on the dirt. I didn't think we allowed that. And how are they going to get maneuver in and out around there?
There's access to that point. We didn't plan on having them come in necessarily from Amick. There is a gate there to get in. The gate is located right on the north side of the cul-de-sac. We had planned for them to come off the paved area next to the Bosin complex and come adjacent to these back greenhouses and come into the parking area from the Bosin side.
And that parking area is just dirt? I mean, we wouldn't require them to.
I believe it's just turf, yeah.
And that's acceptable to the city?
I don't think, I think that they were doing the same at their last location.
That's what we had at the park, was we.
The frequency is, I mean, you're right, the ordinance doesn't allow that for permanent use. So the special permit gives that flexibility for the board to consider what would be appropriate, given the actual frequency that they're going to be allowed to do this, and is that, you know, if the board felt that that was sufficient enough, they could make some requirements to that effect that they needed to.
And in years past, how many vendors do you have a week?
Last year, we averaged about 25 to 40. As we went, the year, as the season went on, we had such a hot summer and also such a, we attribute some of it to the site location, we had a fewer and fewer vendors went that late into the season. So towards the end, we probably had close to 2025, but we, we've also shortened our season and brought them back much further. We are now going only one, I think, one week past Beverdale Fall Fest, whereas last season, I think we went closer to October.
And if, for Amick, where the cul-de-sac is, there are no curb cuts or anything there, so really, nobody should be coming in down Amick?
There's probably a couple of dropped curbs there where there would have been lots.
You think so?
For drive, driveway.
When they built the subdivision. Where those are exactly, it would be hard to tell from what we see here.
No.
I believe there is one, like I said, an access on the very north side of the cul-de-sac there to go up into this, to the paved part, because there is a, there's a fence with a gate there that Bosin maintains. And then there's a break in the fence right here. You can kind of see where the strip of pavement goes down. Almost like a small sidewalk or a drainage that goes out and goes through the fence. But that's about it. And I think that cul-de-sac has all the way around it, no parking.
Go ahead, Mel.
Kenneth, just a couple of questions for you. First of all, I, I was interested to hear you say how you've kind of outgrown the park location or the access was a like people finding you. Kind of last year when you went through this, I thought, well, I wish you well with it, but it would have been difficult for, for me to find where you were.
The biggest complaints that we had during last year's season was parking.
Right.
And accessibility from the road and difficulty in finding the location. Those were the three items.
And those are three things that would be important to me, e- even now, for, for this consideration. And I'm curious, when you said you wanted to move it, you wanted to keep it in Beverdale, right? Obviously, it's Beverdale's farmer's market. Did you look at any other locations? Was this your top one, or have you looked around at other sites?
Our top one that we wanted to move it to is we wanted to try and do sort of like what Valley Junction does, and move it closer to the downtown corridor of Beverdale off of, I believe, Irvin Dale, near the post office.
Okay.
However, with the bus routes and bus scheduling, the traffic that will be going through at that time of day, we couldn't find a day or time or anything like that that would make that work and feasible. And we also had much more significant hurdles with the local businesses in that area, trying to make sure we had.
Was that the only other location you considered?
That was, that was, as well as the Rice Field location, directly across from Holy Trinity.
Okay.
Limited parking, limited, it's same visibility and everything else. The parking was the downtrodden there.
And, and the reason I ask is, you know, if I was on your farmer's market committee or board, if you have one, if I was to think, hmm, where would I put a farmer's market in Beverdale? The church at Hickman and Beaver is at Des Moines Christian. They always got the neat Christmas lights.
I'm not sure. I know.
Yeah.
First church of the open Bible.
First church of the open Bible. Huge parking lot.
Right.
Great access, great visibility. Isn't that in Beverdale? Did you have a discussion with them? Church night's Wednesday. You want to do this Tuesday?
We did not have a discussion with them, so that we've had.
I can't think of a better location, but.
So we have had that brought up. However, we'd end up using the parking lot for the vendors. If the vendors were set up there, we wouldn't have parking for their residents.
Your farmer's market is that big?
We would plan for it, hope to be. We'd hope to try and fill a lot we could. I mean, we'd have, we'd end up with as many spots there as we end up with here.
So you have evaluated that site?
We've looked through it, and we did not approach them about it, but we felt that that was.
Okay.
One other thing we wanted to do is try and keep it somewhere where we're on grass. Try to keep the temperature down, keep it cooler, much more preferable for the produce vendors. That's one thing that one detractor from moving from the park, everyone loved the shade. So many nice established trees in the area. They love the shade, especially the produce vendors to keep their, their, their goods cool.
Okay. All right. Well, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Any more?
Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? I think we have some last comments from staff.
Chair of Boards, Sue Ann Donovan, Zoning Enforcement Officer. Speaking about the parking, it is a concern for enforcement. I believe that there's an order years ago on this lot that Bosin's was allowed to use unimproved spaces at a limited, on a limited basis during Mother's Day, Valentine's Day.
Sure.
If they expand this use, that would trigger an expansion of that legal nonconforming, or the, the order that allowed limited use of unpaved parking, and we may have to look at areas that they're now parking on for other uses and have them improve them. So I just want to throw that out, that allowing this may cause a trickle effect or a domino effect on the parking issue.
So Bosin's as a company can park because of the limited?
On a limited basis during special events that are related to the sale of flowers, such as Mother's Day and Valentine's Day. They can use the unimproved surface for overflow parking only during those times of the year.
Okay.
So then if you add a whole other component, any area over back there used for parking, we would then require it to be improved parking.
Sure.
So what I'm hearing you say is that there has to be an improvement now, or you'll have to see how it works before you, okay.
Yes.
So it.
I'm just throwing that into the mix so that nobody's surprised if overflow parking ends up all over gravel down there, and we say to Bosin's, you've. ends up all over gravel down there and we say to Bozens, you've now violated the conditional use
Right.
that you have for not improving under these conditions because you've expanded the conditions and now we have
Right.
an enforcement issue.
Even though you're recommending approval as staff here.
Staff recommended approval. I am the zoning enforcement officer.
Okay.
My duty is to point out potential enforcement issues.
Okay. Thank you for doing it.
Has that been talked to Bozen? I mean, are Bozens aware of that?
I'm sure they're aware of the limited use that they've got now.
They should be very aware of the limited use.
But...
They are not the applicant before us, are they?
No, no.
So they may not be aware of how this application...
Because, I mean, it could mean that, that they would be forced to do some paving and get some parking.
Correct. Or cancel the event then.
Or cancel the event.
And then that leaves these people in hock.
Right. That's why I want to bring it up so that...
And go somewhere else.
Or they can go back to the park because they'll still have their permit.
Yeah.
Starting to pick up what I'm laying down. That's right.
Okay.
Okay. What, what I'm hearing is that if we grant approval, that in the lease, we, they would have to identify that this situation could happen. So we'll have to make, well, we make that part of, do we, do we even make that part of the motion, Mike, or?
I think you can direct us to make sure that Bozens understands what was approved.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff? You're hearing none of the public, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I, I just, and I don't know if staff can answer this or not, but are there certain, the restroom thing bugs me. Are there certain requirements for gatherings like this where the city says you must provide a number of...
It's a, it's one of those situations that the building code, you know, the plan reviewers say it doesn't really come into play because they're not using the building. And what generates restrooms by code is the, is the building code.
There was talk of...
So it's really based on what's common sense for these, and again, these are temporary events or, you know, not permanent uses of the property. So, you know, it's evaluated the same as it is for the art festival downtown or as the, I'm trying to think of another event, but like 3580. I mean, they really, it's just what, doesn't create a problem. I guess if there's a environmental problem or a health code issue, it'll raise its head and of course, we bring it back to you. But, I mean, it makes sense for them to get adequate facilities.
Yeah.
And they also want to make sure they have accessible, some that are accessible and that type of thing. So, because otherwise, they're subject to a human rights complaint or something of that nature.
And I guess the concern I have is that if, if they end up with porta-potties there, visually, that might not look all that great from June to September, especially for the neighbors on Ovid who are most opposed to this. You know, that would be something...
Unless they took them away, pick them up and set them, yeah.
Wouldn't they be moved after every event?
Well, that's, the question that I ask, would they be moved out after every event? And that, I think, would depend on logistics. And I, I didn't get a good answer on that. So I, that's just one point that makes me think, gee, that visually, I'm not sure that that's...
Yeah, I guess the board could, you know, the board could place any conditions they feel are necessary.
We went through that with mobile food vendors in certain parts of town where they plunk out a porta-potty and just leave it sit.
The difference is...
Didn't look very pretty.
Beaverdale Park had a permanent restroom facility.
Right. They had a, a nice concrete facility that was utilized.
That doesn't mean they, I don't know if they brought any extras in or not.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yep.
I know like for the soccer club around parks and schools in the area, they leave them up all season and they get serviced on site, so.
Right.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board decision.
Well, I'll voice my concerns. I, I think that this would be a good location for it, but I would not be in favor of approving it for five years. I'd like to see it just for one year to see how it goes. I mean, that's 16 events at least through this summer. I am concerned about trash. I don't think people are going to be able to park in the Bozen parking lot. I think you're going to have parking on Ovid, which is going to be the closest street to it. And I'm concerned about trash and garbage and things that are going to end up there. So I would like to see the farmer's market place some trash bins throughout, you know, the neighborhood, such as we do in the fairground neighborhood during the fair. There should be porta-potties that are moved. I mean, I never dreamed that they would leave them there all the time, so I would want to see them moved on a weekly basis. I'm also concerned about vendors parking in Amick. I think that's an awful lot of traffic to bring down Amick when it's a dead-end street. It's just going to be so easy for the vendors to come down there and park. So, you know, I would, if they came through the Bozen parking lot, fine. If there's a gate or something, so we don't have a lot of excess traffic on Amick. Now, if they want to leave it open so people can park, I, I mean, I, I don't know. It's, if they want to park on the street and then walk to the farmer's market, but I'm concerned about vendors. So those are some of my concerns. I don't know how they want to be addressed, but...
Well, the only thing on the one-year versus five-year, the fourth criteria that, condition, is that it'll be brought back if the zoning enforcement officer determines that the event has become detrimental to the neighborhood. That's what I, to me, that's a catch-all. And, you know, to come back next year, next year.
Sure.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think I'm going to budge on that one, just because of the number of cards that we've received. And there's a lot of cards there from people who are saying, we don't, we're not in favor of the five years. We want to see how it goes.
I'm in concurrence with Linda, and I might even be a little tougher. When I saw this plan up here, I, and no offense, Mr. Camling, I think he's well-intended, that other space difficult to find. And even then, I think access was a little bit of a question mark I had a year ago with that. I don't think we're solving anything here. Yes, there's more quote visibility, but getting in and out of there off Beaver isn't going to be any fun. That's going to be packed. You're going to have people trying to come around on Amick, getting lost. I already think that the Bozen site itself probably needs some improvement the way it is for their current or future activities, let alone add this in. And from all those comments I've seen, I do take those seriously. There was somebody that said, the city of Des Moines doesn't care anyway. And that bothers me, not because they wrote it, but because they would think that that's the case. If I was to look at a location, again, I know, you know, we need better visibility, we need better access, but we also want trees and we want shade and we want it to be cool. Well, not one site is going to be perfect for everything. And this site certainly is not perfect for everything. And the concerns I have are the larger public ones, not the vendors' convenience. I think there could be some other locations explored here. This is 16 weeks a year. That's what it comes out to be. Those are the 16 best weeks to live in Iowa. So, you know, just a Tuesday night, but at most, I would support, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Chair, about, well, let's not keep dragging them back. But if they do it for a year and it works, and they're willing to reinvest again, then I think they could come back and say, now we want it for five, and now we got support of the residents on Amick. But if they come back in a year and the residents are like, no, we've had it with this, because otherwise, we put the burden on Sue Ann and her staff to have to go out there and check this out.
Well, I think that she'd be getting an earful from the residents.
Well, they might, or they might just call the police and the police may or may not call her. I don't know. And all of this, two-thirds of it would happen after public hours are over. I mean, Sue barely gets out of work at 4:30, I think, anyway. But, but I'm, I'm just a little concerned about, you know, kind of giving an inch and we take a mile, whether it's, and I'm sure not intentionally by the appellant. I'm sure they, I'm sure they mean well. But I just don't think it's the best fit for what they're trying to do here. So my support would be very limited at best.
Okay.
The other thing that I would like to see is for, and I know it's a volunteer group who are working on trying to put this whole thing together, but to, you know, have, have them talk to the people who have issues, the folks on Amick and the folks on Ovid, to try to either alleviate those issues a bit, or I don't know that they're going to eliminate them, but at least give them a better understanding of what the plan is, the trash pickup results.
Jake, you got those cards over there?
Mm-hmm.
Eric, you want to make, can we make a copy of, or let them look at them while we're...
Can them.
We can, we can scan them and email them to them if, if you want to.
Yeah.
Do you want him to look at them right now?
Later, because obviously, they're, they're going to have to face them sometime.
Yeah.
So it'd be nice to know what their thoughts are anyway. Jake?
Mr. Chair, I actually disagree with the other members of the board. I think that they have a track record of existing in the neighborhood, not that far away from the, from this site. I've driven through that area on numerous occasions, one, the farmer's market was taking place last year. And it, I can't believe they didn't get any complaints. It needs to move to a more visible location where the parking is accessible from more than one L-shaped street. I think, I think this site makes sense. It's not perfect to someone else's comment. If they did not have trash issues, that I think zoning enforcement officer did not have any record of any complaints of the previous operation. They, they've proven themselves at some level. That's important to me. And so I would recommend staff, as, as they have it recommended.
A lot of different ideas out here. Let's see where we stand. You want to put that in the form of a motion, Jake? Except staff recommendations?
I would move staff recommendations.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Get some further discussion? Are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion fails three to two. So, have we got another motion then?
I, you know, I'll bend on everything except the five years.
And I'd say, let's, let's try it for a year and really put it to the test for everybody. It's not theoretical then.
But doesn't that exist within the recommendations?
No, not, not directly. It doesn't.
Not directly.
It'd have to be complaint-driven to have a review. And to me...
Isn't that what you're saying, though?
No, I'm saying, you, you only get it for a year and that's it. You're going to have to come back next year and tell us it has gone well. I'm just not going to rely on, on the city to have to take complaints. I want to hear from the residents after a year if it works for them.
Well, the only thing I, I have on that, Mel, is that we do that with some of the other, like taverns, you know, we, that one down, what, Southwest 9th, you know, we put it back in the zoning and for, and Sue Ann did a great job of monitoring that.
And one or five isn't my biggest issue here. I, I don't really like the location. So that's why, to help make it work, I'll go for a year. I'm putting it out there.
All right. You're not going to budge for a year, like maybe two?
16 events. I'll be able to get it figured out. 16 events to come up with, make it work. I've never seen so many negative cards on an issue from neighbors in recent time.
Can the applicant step up here a second? This is one of those times when we've got a divided board here.
Absolutely. I mean, and I completely understand it. The reason I am on the board for Beaverdale Farmer's Market is because I didn't want it in the park. It's across the street from my house. I didn't want it there. It was going to be a pain in my ass every time I came home on Tuesday afternoon to go through all that traffic. So that's why I got involved and I became part of the board, was because I wanted to make sure it worked well and it worked well for all the residents. So we absolutely are going to be heartfelt about that and make sure that any concerns that the residents in that area have, we will definitely make our best effort to address, and every reasonable effort to address. Now, we have, in addition to the, the notice that the city sent out, we sent our own notice out, our own pamphlets and our flyers to all the residents in that area, went door-to-door and knocked and said, hey, this is what our intentions are. Even though the zoning board hasn't ruled or agreed to it yet, this is what we are planning to do. And we gave them the same map that we gave you. So we've made sure everyone, and of that, we only had three respondents. One negative, one wanting more information, and one positive. And I would love to see those cards so we can address any concerns people do have.
We'll get, get those to you. The issue I'm faced here is that I think we, as a board, are in agreement that it's not a bad idea.
Right.
There's a few reservations about the location, but what we can't get over the hurdle is whether we have one or five year.
Right.
If, if we go...
So my concern, and that was part of my, one of my items that I wanted to do last year during the last market, was say, do it for a year and then reevaluate it. And now that I'm part of the board, I kind of know the budgetary side of it, I'd be okay with that. So can we do it for a year, approve it for five years on the condition that at one year, we review it? So not have to do the whole application, the notice and everything else again?
Yeah, I was, I was going to, I think that he makes a really good point. And I was going to see if there was some way we could actually do that legally as a review so they don't have to spend the 300 and some odd dollars.
Total 475 to do all the notices and the permit.
For these nonprofit organizations, you probably barely make that. And just to piggyback on what he's saying, at the Neighborhood Association meeting that I attended just recently, last, very recently, a couple of weeks ago, this subject was discussed to the, to the group and there was a full house of residents there, and there was no opposition. Everyone seemed okay with the new location. They just said it hasn't been approved, but this is what the plans are and this is where we hope to relocate. So, and I, I also feel better knowing that you talked to the residents, you...
We made it an effort to make contact.
We made an effort to knock on the door, hope somebody answered. I mean, I feel better knowing that you've made those efforts. So that kind of summits it in for me.
Okay. Sue Ann, you have something?
Chair of Boards, Sue Ann Donovan, zoning enforcement officer, unfortunately, we can't waive fees to come back if we have to bring the case back and re-notify. That barely covers staff time and effort and we need to, and it's set by council what the fees are. So that, I mean, I understand the budgetary constraints, but I understand, you know, the cards and the whole neighborhood thing. This isn't the first time you've done this, where you've taken a special event and asked them to come back in a year. There was one on the south side behind a hotel, same, same issues, same huge cards, and you did the same thing. You said in a year, you have to come back, reapply, and we'll rehear it. And that gives you a year to do outreach to the neighborhood and make sure that there isn't any opposition to the way it's being run. I don't see much difference.
And, and I don't see it as a burden so much to the neighborhoods. I, I see it, the vendors are there. They're making money every week. You know, you just pass, I mean, the vendors are the ones that can absorb the cost. The vendors are there. They're, I mean, that's money that's not being spent at Ivy and Dole's and, you know, places like that. But I, I support it. I mean, I think farmer's markets are great, but I think the vendors should be responsible.
Can I ask the applicant one more question?
Sure. Still up there, yeah?
Will you have to pay Bozen to rent their property for this event?
No, they are sponsoring us, allowing us to use the property.
Okay, good. I was going to say, maybe they could reduce the rent.
Our only fifteen cost is...
Thank you. That's very kind of them to support.
The police officers that we would have during the, every week at the event, we plan on having a police officer and then the, the porta-john.
Okay.
I believe are, are two top costs that we're planning on.
And I'm assuming that there were revenues?
Yes. I don't know exactly what, we were about, I believe, a thousand is what we ended up after last year.
And, and I would think by moving it to this new location, your revenues would increase.
We certainly hope so.
I would think so.
I mean, our, our revenue stream is set. We know.
Here's your 400.
Depending on how many vendors we have, we, we don't, we don't collect a percentage from the number of week. They pay by membership fee, basically. So that's, we've set what we're going to get.
I don't have to cut you off here so we can get a vote going here.
Yeah.
I hear a year. I still don't agree. We don't do it for any other farmer's market. We give everybody five years. To me, it's almost singling them up.
It's a special permit. It's not a farmer's market. They're asking for a special permit. They're not asking for a farmer's market permit. It's a special event.
I want to get over the hump and you got to go, so.
I'm listening to the concerns on those cards and neighbors are having concerns. I, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
I'm more than willing to get this thing off the table.
Okay.
So go ahead and put a motion out.
Okay. All right. I make a motion to grant the special permit for 3422 Beaver Avenue for a period of no more than one year.
And the rest is staff recommendations?
And then, yes. And, and subject to staff recommendations for the other contingency.
One year then?
Yeah. Yeah, to expire then in, you know, September 2013 or October 2013.
The thing I'm, I'm looking at is, I didn't mean to cut you off, no...
Sure.
The thing, we can't talk anymore, but I just want to make sure that, you know, that you're going to follow through with the, with the cards, because obviously, Linda's number one concern is the neighbors. And so if, if, if you can address that, then I don't think a year from now to come back and say, hey, it's good five years and everything's going fine, you might even get Mel on your side, so.
Yep.
Okay, do I hear a second to Mel's?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Yeah, it's like, I kind of just barely got it up there.
Consensus.
Motion carries five to nothing.
When you agree, it means you accept.
Well, thank you for putting together a good compromise, folks. We got this one going. Mel, you got to go?
Yes, but I'll try to return within thirty minutes would be probably my ETA.
Here's what I'm, did you get those taken care of, Bert or?
Eric, well-
Okay, good.
I'll be still here.
All right. We have-
I think they pressed him back down that way.
We got four items left here. Mel's got to take a call, so we're down to four members. Two thirty? Well, we could. Oh, I see. I'll tell you what, we'll take a ten-minute break right now and then see where Mel's at instead of the three o'clock timeframe and maybe we can get them put together. Get back together at two forty.
Side of Ingersoll, so they can get the required number of spaces. However, that lease has expired, so there is a ongoing parking issue that's separate from the appeal today. Here's a photo of the site. This little building right here where the Lot 33 Coffee is operating out of, they have an outdoor patio here on the east side of the building that is a part of the request. You can see the Manhattan Deli, the Greenwood Lounge, and the former Ingersoll Dinner Theater, just to the west. And then this is, looking at the backside of the building, this rear entrance to the Manhattan Deli here, off-street parking, this area, and then the patio on the east side of the building, right there. Comment cards. We did get several cards in opposition and then a couple in support. I believe the Neighborhood Association is here today with some concerns as well. The police reports for the past twelve months didn't really show anything. The copies of them are all in front of your chairs, so. There's nothing really there that jumped out at staff. However, we are concerned about allowing the business to be converted to a tavern. We feel it's much too close to the single-family houses to the north and across the street to the east to be a tavern use. Also, the outdoor patio proposes issues or concerns for staff. And then also the, just the shortage of parking in the area also is a concern. We also are aware that the business in the east end or west end of the building, the former Ingersoll Dinner Theater, that has been operating as a restaurant, but at times in the evenings it can function as a bar. Same with the Greenwood Lounge that is clearly a tavern. So we felt just having really, having two or three taverns on this parcel is just too much for this one little parcel with only thirty off-street parking. So for those reasons, we've recommended denial of the request. We feel this is an appropriate location for a coffee house or for another little restaurant or any other retail businesses or office uses that are allowed in the NPC district. We feel there's plenty of available uses for this building. We just feel that a tavern is not an appropriate use. Again, we've recommended denial of the conditional use permit. Any questions?
Questions for staff?
They're, they're currently selling beer.
They're currently able to sell beer and wine and liquor as a restaurant use, but as a restaurant, they're required to keep the sales of alcohol to under fifty percent of their sales. And they haven't been able to meet that fifty percent threshold, so really they've already been operating as a tavern in violation, which is why they're here today. I should also mention that the recently adopted liquor regulations that were adopted by City Council last September do require a hundred and fifty feet of separation from any church, park, school, or daycare. And the site does meet that a hundred and fifty-foot separation, so there's no separation issues. It's just, we don't feel this is an appropriate location, so.
Any other questions? Thanks, Bert. Applicant, representative applicant?
Good afternoon, Councilman. My name is Raj DeKwan. Seven eight oh three Cottonwood Lane, West Moonee. I took over the business in August and I was brought to attention, this was operating under a restaurant when I went for a liquor change. So I was suggested to change my zoning from a restaurant to a tavern, which I'm not able, which I won't have to able to prove the fifty-fifty of the sale. So I'm just here to just have that changed. It's operating as a coffee shop. We serve some pizza and some microwaveable food and stuff, but I am not able to keep the fifty-fifty. So I'm taking all the possible measure to convert it to a tavern. It's running, I have brought my manager along with you, Mr. Tim Flanagan. He can feed you on more if you have any more further caution on it. So my request is just change for, so my main thing is, so I can, when the audit comes in at the end of the year, you know, I have trouble explaining to you guys, okay, my fifty percent of the sales is coming from my food. So I just want to be, I don't want to live with the tension, okay, I have to approve you guys. Because my sales, I, I cannot prove the sale. I, because I, there are places, very small, first of all. It only holds about thirty, thirty-five people. It's only thirteen hundred square foot, feet, and it doesn't have a kitchen in it. If I put a kitchen, it'll take a three-fourth of my space. It's running as the gentleman mentioned before, it's running as a tavern. If he also serves pizza and all kind of stuff, my numbers are not matching it up to fifty-fifty, so the reason I want to change it. I had no trouble for last six months at that place and like, look at the police records. So even the neighbors are coming and giving me good compliments that I got something good going on over there. We are a very small place. I have my very mature crowd that comes in most of the time. Most of the time, I close the place by 1:00, 1:15, too. So, and I have a very experienced manager, who's Tim Flanagan, who's been in this business for a long time, is helping me out in it. So I'm just requesting. The main concern is, at the end of the year, the audit comes in. If I'm not able to prove it, you know, where I go, you know? So I'm already running anything, same clean establishment, which has a mature crowd comes in, we close it by 1:00, 1:15, no troubles. You've seen the records, you know? And with an issue with the parking and stuff, that's an ongoing thing with Mr. Lee for a long time, which I wasn't aware of it. But we are working on that process with Mr. Lee and also Sue Donovan on that, so resolve the issue.
Questions?
Can you say the comment cards?
Yeah, good point. You may have said that people are okay with it. We've got a pretty big list, and I'd like to have you look at it.
Okay.
And the fact that, you know, it's not just a change. You're asking to make this liquor store and sell liquor, and that's a little bit harder to prove, so it's not just a change.
I still want to sell the, I don't have a room for a kitchen, so I cannot, it's too able for me to prove you the 50/50 is hard. And I'm admitting to the fact it's going to be hard for me. So I just, I'll be still doing what I'm doing. I'm still selling my coffee, I'll still be doing my pizza and other stuff. But since I don't have a kitchen, it's going to be very, very hard for me to prove the 50/50. So just cautionary measures, so if the audit comes in, I just, I'm on the safe side to keep my business open, running the way it is, you know?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to clarify. When you say he's going to be selling liquor, you don't mean packaged liquor.
No.
Like, buy the drink liquor.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just a bar.
Yeah. That's what I was getting at.
Okay.
It's not just a change.
Right.
This is, and you know, we do have close neighbors, right?
Yes.
You know, residential, that's where my concern comes.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
What?
Is he open for questions?
Yes.
Okay. You mentioned you took over in August to kind of run just, what, just a nice place people can come in and eat and have a beer.
Eat beer, wine, and sell liquor. My menu also controls some of my coffee drinks.
Had you operated elsewhere before with your business or your personal experience?
I have. I have currently two places running in Ames, Avenue, and Story County. I got a café mood over there and also a cable to lounge. I'm into entertainment business for the last 20 years.
Okay. Both of those are in Ames, you say?
I, two are in Ames currently running successfully over there, so.
All right. And what's the name of your establishment now? What's it called?
Their current establishment name is Lot 33 Coffee Shop and Lounge.
Okay.
So, coffee bar and lounge, so.
Okay. Thank you.
What are your hours?
My hour operations are usually, we open at 4:00 till 2:00 p.m., but like, a week doesn't stop. Most of the time, I end up closing by like, 12:00, 31:00 o'clock, max, you know? And it's no, more of an older, mature, responsible crowd, nothing, no complaints from the authorities. None of the neighbors come up with a sound, noise, or nothing like that. Just a small place, very, very small place. I hardly get packed to the weekends with the maximum capacity either, 10, 15 people max, in and out. Very, very small place.
Any other questions?
And what's the maximum capacity?
According to the, your thing, it was, Tim, it was 47?
Oh, okay. I thought you said it only had 10 or 15.
No, I usually have 10 or 15 people, maximum on a weekdays or so, in and out of the place, Weekends are busy, a little bit over that, so, but it's mostly in and out crowd, so.
And why is it in and out?
Many people come there, have their drink, coffee, or they leave, you know? This Greenwood across, it's Ingersoll got plenty of taverns, they move around. My other focus is that it's a bike-friendly place, too. I have a 20-feet bike rack, which, since Ingersoll is a bike-friendly thing, so most of the bikers come in there to have a beer in there, have a wine, or even a lemonade, and just move on, so.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in support?
Good afternoon. Tim Flanagan, 7214 Beechwood Drive, Urbana, Iowa. I used to have Flanigans, I'm sure all of you've been in there once or twice. I have retired, and I'm working part-time for Raj and kind of helping him out managing the place. He runs a nice little establishment. It's 1,300 square feet. I know the Marquis, there's been some problems there. Greenwood, I've been going to for years, and they're a nice little place. And it is, it's a residential area, you all know where it is. He doesn't have a lot of problems. It's just, just a little, it's a little joint, it's a little hole in the wall. 1,300 square feet, probably 350 is bathroom, you got 1,000 square feet left. You can't, there's no way he'll ever do the 50% food. I know that. You people are sitting here, you know that. If you know that, it's an old gas station, you know the size of it. But it's a clean-run place, and it's not a, it's not a lot of young kids in their booze and raising hell like they do in a lot of places. It's just, it's a nice little joint. And we get a lot of the people from Greenwood coming over, and also, they go back and forth to Greenwood. We've lit the back parking lot up. I think we need nine spots. Yes, 45 for the whole situation. We have six in the front. Manhattan Deli uses it during the day, which is fine. We, like I said, we have lit in the back parking lot. I know you're, the city is having a problem with Mr. Lee, the landlord, for site plans, for striping the lot. We're trying to work with Mr. Lee to get him to get that stuff to the city. But overall, it's, it's another little joint that's going to get 40 or 50 people there on a busy Friday night, just like the Greenwood next door, unlike the Marquis that's going to have 200 people in there leaving at 2:00 in the morning, which I think is more of a, which they've got nothing to do with us trying to get a tavern use permit. And that's about all I have to say. Good, thank you.
One final question for you, sir. Now, you are open for lunch, or you continue to be open during the noon hour?
I can't.
No?
Because I don't have a kitchen there.
All right, because you don't have a kitchen, so you have to quit altogether.
Yeah, I mean, I can sell a coffee and stuff over there, put a person over there. I open at 4:00.
Okay. What time would the tavern, if it would be approved, open?
It's from Monday through Friday, 4 to...
4:00. Oh, okay. I'm curious, because I go to Manhattan Deli once in a while.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't want to see a conflict with, gee, I'm trying to park there, to go in there while you're trying to get customers into your place.
No, my 4:00, from 4:07, I might have like, one or two customers sitting over there.
Okay.
And plus, there's also an additional parking across the street, which is not...
Right.
...pavement, which Mr. Lee's working on to put it together. He's also working with the Edco leasing people to have more parking and stuff.
All right.
Because that's more issue with the Marquis, because that's a bigger place.
When does Manhattan Deli close for the day?
I think they close at 7:00, 7:00 p.m., so.
All right. Okay, thank you.
I just have one question. You've been there since August. What was it before?
It was another Lunar Coffee Bar and stuff. The revenue wasn't that good, you know? It was the same, he was selling wine, liquor, beer, and coffee.
But when you took it in August, I mean, you must have known that there wasn't a kitchen, so why would you go there? I mean, unless your intent was to turn it into a tavern?
I wasn't intention to turn it a tavern. I'm not denying on that, so. Because with the kitchen, it's hard for me to prove that anyway, there's no room for it. Why did I go in there?
Yeah, I'm just, well, I'm just wondering why the person who was there before, I mean, how was it ever, how could it ever be a restaurant?
He was having financial troubles and stuff, an opportunity knocked into my door, I took it, so.
Okay.
And with my experience with the taverns and stuff, so I thought it'd be, it'd be fine. And so, but I've been honest about it, I'm not able to put the 50/50 offer. That's what brought to you guys' attention to help me out with this.
Sure. Thank you.
Do you have any kind of, you know, do you have like, a year lease you'd be responsible for if we just say today, sorry?
Yeah, I am, actually. I have invested about a good amount, good amount of money to make the brand, that's my whole thing, is I make a product to be a brand product.
Okay.
And I put a lot of money into it to make it a product, clean and a brand product. I have a lease till October, which if you guys deny it, I will lose a lot of money.
But before taking on that lease, did you check with the city on what the requirements were for the type of operation you wanted to have?
Yes, when I, they changed my liquor, when I, as operating business partner, I went to the city, get it converted to the, my name, my liquor license. Linda downstairs mentioned to me, she made me sign that thing for 50/50.
50%, okay.
Okay, then I brought, and she said, I said, there's no way I'm going to do that, was this, was the, all the process I have to go through, get a change. She said, take it to the, you had to go to the zoning board. So that's why I put an application in.
Okay, but this didn't happen, but you must not have asked this question, if you've been operating since when?
Well, I took in August.
In August. So in August, you knew that you wouldn't be able to meet the 50%, but you opened anyway? Am I leap ahead here?
No, no, no. I went to Linda, she mentioned that, she brought me a form.
Okay.
And then I said, what I have to do to change it to a tavern?
Yes.
Then I put an application to you guys.
Well, you must have waited quite a while, because that application process is only about 30 days, I think, month to month.
There was an ongoing issue with Mr. Lee, situation was going on, too. That was delaying the whole process, too.
Got it. Okay.
So, and I'm just taking all the cautionary and legal manners to process my thing and keep my business open.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Kimberly Hansen, 4015 Woodland Avenue. I'm president of the North of Grand Neighborhood Association, and I have a letter here from our association that I'd like to pass down. Before I read the letter, I would like to say we have no opposition against the business and the business owner. And actually, after listening to him today, I think maybe we need to figure out a way to have, provide him with more food items in there so that he can sell those. You know, we have several caterers in the neighborhood. So what we're here today for is to talk about the ongoing zoning that would be placed on this property, not just for this business owner, but for the future, and then the crime that has been happening in the area. So I'll go ahead and read our letter. "The North of Grand Neighborhood has worked hard to build a positive blend between commercial and residential needs in our neighborhood. The blend of the needs between commercial and residential sometimes overlap, and we try to look at both sides and both needs from both areas. The item 12 in front of you today for a conditional use permit will change the use of the property indefinitely. Residents in the neighborhood have concern for the increase in crime on this block, including a shooting in the alley behind the adjoining businesses of the applicant. The subject property is within 150 feet of a dance studio located at 607 37th Street. That dance studio has been there for over 40 years. This dance studio has a large number of children aged three and older in classes on weekday afternoons and evenings and Saturdays, which start at about 4:00 in the afternoon. We understand that this is not a school by ordinance standards, but functions as a school for the students when they are there. The notification of residents within 250 feet is required by, but the commercial area along Ingersoll is utilized by the whole neighborhood." So your cards that you're seeing is just the 250 feet. "But we feel this area is, you know, an area that utilized by everyone in the neighborhood. The blend of restaurants and taverns that are open in the evenings affects crime, safety, and the environment for families that reside within the same block and further into the neighborhood. With that, we request that you deny the conditional use permit today and help ensure that the neighborhood remains an even blend before, between commercial and residential."
Questions?
Questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in opposition?
Mark Siegfried, 4105 Woodland. I'm a resident in the neighborhood and on the neighborhood board as well. Just some quick comments. I do find the staff comments to be spot-on in every regard, and in our experience on the board of dealing with the general vicinity and the community around it, we think this is a significant change, as you pointed out. And it's, put very simply, it's too much congestion, too much concentrated alcohol business with not enough site available to solve those problems and protect the community around it. If it were bigger, if there were adequate parking, if there were other ways to do it, it's, again, just going to create a big change in the usage and the congestion, and no way to protect the community around it, the residents around it, from something this close. That's the real problem, not with the nature of the business or the business owner. So, thank you.
Thank you. I didn't even have to speak. Another opposition. Is there anybody else going to want to speak in opposition? I didn't have to, okay. You'd be the last one, then? Okay.
Ken Logan, 607 37th Street, Tanglefoot Cottage Dance Studio. I figured I could just paint a little bit more broader picture of what's going on with the activity we do, working with children, looking at it not just from the neighborhood and the family perspective, but also other small business in the area. As Kimberly mentioned, we've been there since the building was built to be a dance studio in 1969, 1970. And while we're not technically a school or a daycare center, we do have a lot of children coming and going all week long. And it's not just the children who are in classes. Mothers and fathers will have their other children in tow, or cousins, or sometimes our students will bring friends who want to watch a class once or twice before they enroll. Some of our students are teenagers, 16, 17-years-old, driving to and from the studio on their own, and some of our students are children who live in the neighborhood who walk to and from. We also have lots of children for classes that go later than 5, 6:00 at night, will go across the street to the Manhattan to get something to eat if they're in two classes. So we have a lot of, a lot of our traffic involving children, more or less in the same area. And that, it doesn't give us a large concern based upon the type of businessman who's running the establishment. I've seen the way things are going, and I think it looks good, but at the same time, personally, I don't feel the need for another tavern there. It just makes me a little bit edgy, you know, when I'm sitting in the office and I watch, okay, well, at least there's two of them going across to the Manhattan at the same time. That's better than if one was going alone. But it still, still makes me a little bit personally nervous. From a more business side, I'm definitely not unsympathetic to the situation they're in at Lot 33. You know, I've had businesses that have failed before, I've had businesses that have succeeded, but the alcohol-to-food ratio that was in place was in there, you know, long before the lease was signed. And any, any failure in due diligence to rectify that situation, or basically saying, okay, well, I'm going to make a go-for-it regardless of that situation, really falls on the person running the business and not on this board, at least in my opinion. And then, looking up and down Ingersoll, there are other businesses like Uncle Wendell's Barbecue and Zanzibar. Now, they have, from what I can see, probably at least as much, if not more, of their square footage devoted to preparing food and drink than for actual customer seating. And I'm not an expert on what it, you know, what square, how square footage relates to number of parking spaces needed, but if installing a kitchen would not only make that ratio more amicable to the board, but also make it so that they could fulfill their parking requirement, that would be a win-win for the neighborhood and for the business.
Any questions? Thank you. I don't think there's anybody else here more to speak in opposition, so you've got three minutes if you want to make any closing comments or rebut anything.
Thank you. I think most of the reflection is coming through the business, which was already, already there, the Marquis and a trouble and a crowd, you know? I think everybody's kind of relating that aspect of it. And it's for six months, when you look at the city logs for the, any kind of a city view, for the crime report, nothing, nothing came out of my establishment. I'm running a clean, clean place, which is very small, and for the last six months, I had no trouble, no complaints. And as for the dance studio people, I think some of the parents also come in over there after dropping their kids and, you know, come have a coffee or something like that in my place, you know? And a couple of the customers come and say, well, my kids are while doing it, I can have a drink or a coffee or something like that. I mean, I don't have no very mature, responsible crowd, nothing nuisance going on over there. Means, I don't have no very mature, responsible crowd, nothing nuisance going on over there. And I can keep running as a place, means the way it is running, means it's just my thing, my thing to you guys is, okay, the audit comes in at the end of a year, okay, prove, prove me the fifty fifty. It will be hard for me to do that. And that's the reason I just want to change it from my zoning from a restaurant to tavern, so, means, just to be on, me on a safe side, you know? I'm running the place the way it is, I'm still selling the pizzas, my snacks, my, my microwave sandwiches, I'm not changing any business plan or nothing, the way it's running. You know, we do sell quite a bit of pizza products, some chicken Philly sandwiches and stuff. It's just like, I cannot, it's, I just want to be on a safe side. If I work hard, I'd be able to do that too, just do a fifty fifty, just to be on a safe side, I just, that's the reason I wanted to change it too. You know?
Any other questions? Thank you. Any last questions for staff?
Yes. I have a question about the non-conforming status. When we look at the quote site, we're looking at the entire square. We, we don't have subparcels here or, or anything. So, since the site has lost its non-conforming status, primarily because the marquee or the dinner theater closed, right?
It was vacant for more than six months, so the property lost its...
Okay, so these other uses that might want to occur on the property like this, they're in for a penny, in for a pound, they all
Right.
fall in, non-conforming is lost.
They were able to meet the off-street parking requirement by getting a lease for some parking spaces across the street.
Okay, but now they've lost that.
That's how they were able to reopen, is Copacabana, later is the Grand Marquee.
But now that's not there.
But they, they haven't been able to provide us with it currently, so it's not to say Mr. Lee, the property owner, hasn't been able to get that, but he hasn't been able to prove, so, Sue Ann, it's like she's probably gonna speak as well, she's ready to take action on that parking.
So, if they're in non-conforming status now, even if we, let's say we approve this today, would they have to have a new site plan for parking and landscaping and lighting and all that to go with any approved use that we would give?
I don't...
Or, or would parking need that if there is no off-site lease?
This is, it's NPC...
Do you kind of see what I'm...
...zoning commission.
Sue Ann Donovan, zoning enforcement officer. Mr. Lee has been notified as of April of twenty twelve that he had site plan violations. He doesn't have a site plan, he can't prove the number of parking spaces that are on the lot, he can't prove how deficient he is in parking, he needs some other improvements. There's a patio area built that encroaches into parking, there are just a lot of ongoing issues.
Was that related to a tavern?
It's related to all uses.
All right.
In combination, as you said.
Yeah, okay.
The marquee was the first liquor license that came up, that I was aware of, under the violation notice for site plan violations. That was, went to council on our request for denial of that, and they couldn't meet the fifty percent food sales. As we go through other liquor licenses coming up, we will request denial on those for failure to have the site in compliance. If you should grant the conditional use permit to move from restaurant to tavern, there's still, the site is still gonna have to be brought into compliance as a total, and at some point, when their liquor license comes up, in any respect, either as a restaurant or a tavern, that would be looked at at that time. So, does that sort of make it...
It, it does help. And I have one quick question on food sales. With what he's selling now, or might continue to sell, the whole idea of the grease interceptor for food sales and all that, does that apply to this kind of food sales?
I, I don't know if there was some...
Because he maybe doesn't count as having a kitchen then, if he's just got a microwave?
Those are all good questions that probably should have been caught when they signed off on the restaurant license.
Okay, all right, all right.
Unfortunately.
Okay, we'll just leave it at that for now. Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? There are none, we'll close the public portion and go to board decision.
Well, while I, I'm sympathetic to the applicant's plight, I still would, I, I would have to move staff recommendations. This is just, it's just not an appropriate place. It's never been a tavern, it never should be a tavern. It, I don't know how it could ever be a restaurant, if it doesn't even have a kitchen. And, I mean, he, he, he went into that business knowing that. My concern is, is that the light, you know, it goes with the land, and I just do not want to see a tavern there. The neighborhood doesn't want to see it, nobody around there wants to see it, it's just not the best place for it to be.
It's not reasonable to think you're gonna hit fifty fifty when you're open from four to one in what is supposed to be a coffee shop. So I don't think he went into it with the approach of, at least a wholehearted attempt at making the fifty fifty. I would second the motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I'm, and, and I don't mean to cut the vote off here, but I'm generally in agreement with everyone, but I think it's important to be clear for the record here. I, one, one of the concerns that I have is, in accordance with the staff analysis and recommendations here, I don't believe that approving the, or I, if we would approve this use, it would not safeguard the general welfare of persons residing in and around this location and that surrounding neighborhood. We do have a parking lot that is very close now, already with a tavern use that was in the area, we had issues. We have one tavern use already on the property, it's kind of like the straw that breaks the camel's back here. Another tavern use to add on, on the same property, same site, when we don't have compliance with site plans, when we have an owner who appears has a track record, at this stage at least, of not wanting to step forward and improve the property, we, we would kind of be adding more insult to the injury we already have here if we approve this. I'm not sure how well-intended the applicant was or not, but again, I think he, as the one guy said, he didn't do his due diligence. I'm not gonna accuse him of anything else, but he really should have checked this out. And kind of starting to get going, and then just hoping you make the fifteen, if you don't, just ask for the conversion, it's not that easy.
It's not a conversion, you're right.
Yeah. So, I, I think in, in, in conformance with the reasoning behind denial of a conditional use permit, this is not gonna adequately safeguard the safety and general welfare of persons residing in and around there. With setbacks, residence is too close, you know, conflicting uses here, I'm not gonna support it either, so.
Anything, Cindy?
Well, I'm just, it's kind of one of those sad situations that you hate to see, but, but I think with the new manager, who's got a lot of experience, that maybe they can think of some additional food type items that could be brought in to help with the sales. You know, there's the one that's got the dessert bar that's very popular, you start, you know, having these wonderful desserts with coffee, you might be able to draw more folks in after four o'clock. You know, I, I just think that there's some things that maybe could happen, although I am very sympathetic.
And, and the only thing that I, I, expanding on what Mel said, they came here, and they're gonna put in a restaurant, or they're gonna put in a tavern, we'd be looking at a restaurant, we wouldn't be putting a tavern in there, so, and, and that's why I said, it's not, it's not just a conversion, this is actually a
Right.
a change.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And I'm real sympathetic to the neighborhood. They, they build a good case, and it is right on top of the neighborhood, so, I can't support it either, so. Motion, and it has been seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Motion carries five to nothing. Item thirteen, an appeal to zoning determination, or variance, it's a two-part deal then? You're carrying this one, Sue Ann? Thanks, Tim, see ya.
Chair, board, Sue Ann Donovan, zoning enforcement officer. We are talking about a property at forty-seven twenty Southwest Twenty-Sixth. The map showing the, the property. Here is the consent map. I'll send around cards. For all intents and purposes, this is a very easy case, and I won't take long to present. This, this lot, in nineteen seventy-nine, was used as a truck leasing lot, for a truck leasing company. In nineteen seventy-nine, then they rented it to Rent-A-Car Company. In nineteen eighty-five, it transferred to a Hertz rental car. The use is allowed as a Hertz rental car, this is an M-three district. As outlined in the ordinance, which I'm gonna mark as exhibit one and enter into evidence, this would be an automobile rental office and storage. That is an allowed use in an M-three. As part of the rental office and storage for rental vehicles to be used in conjunction with the airport, which is one of the intents of the M-three district, most rental car companies will have a washing and detailing bay, so that when cars come back, after they're rented, they go through the washing and detailing, they're parked there for the next customer to rent the car. That is, that was the use on that lot. Hertz went out of this lot into the airport, airport site, where they were trying to co-locate all the rental car facilities, at which point, the, the lot was leased to a, a business that detailed and washed construction equipment. So, somebody would take a construction truck, and they would have it stored somewhere else, they'd bring it over here, it would park for a short amount of time, they'd wash it, detail it, it would drive back to its home and be stored there permanently. This is a change in use, from a parking lot for storage of rental cars with the accessory use of washing the cars that are stored there for rental, to a business that was primarily an only retail, detailing and washing business, where the trucks were stored there for a short, a short amount of time. That is not allowed in an M-three district. That would, that entailed a change of use that then would have, now triggers us to look at what site improvements need to go on the site, should a new business who, that is legal in an M-three zone move into the site. That's what we're here about. That's the only issue. The app, the appellant will argue that it's just a parking lot, no matter what you do on it, it's a parking lot. Unfortunately, under the zoning ordinance, we, we slice and dice meanings of what is the appropriate use for parking vehicles. Some are rental car, and with an accessory, some are parking lots, like the downtown parking ramps, and some are parking for construction equipment that's going through some sort of detailing. It, it is a fine line as to what's allowed and what isn't allowed in zoning districts, and we do our best to make sure that we have the appropriate use there. This is not the only lot down by the airport, that as it changed use, has to come in with a site plan and do site plan upgrades. For a new parking lot use within conjunction with the airport, so what they want to do next is put that back to the original use, but we have a break-in use, now we need a site plan, that's what we're here about. Whether or not there was a break-in use that now triggers that loss of legal non-conforming status for setbacks and landscaping, when the new business goes in there. I argue, there was a change in use, they, they shouldn't have had the truck detailing in there in the first place. Granted, somebody probably missed the ball and didn't give them the right notice, or gave them the notice and then backed off on the notice and didn't follow through with it, this is the time to catch it. This is the time to get the improvements. This is the time to make that corner look better, get some setbacks, some landscaping, and have it meet some of our basic guidelines that we have for this type of use. I'm not gonna give you a lot more information, that's the basis of it, it's not that complicated. So, if you have questions?
So, Sue Ann, the fact that if they had have left it as parking, they still could have stayed legal non-conforming?
Yes, if they would have had a parking that's an accessory, that, that's a rental car, or some sort of airport parking, what, what the new tenant wants to do, if they should move in there, is if I fly to Florida, I will take my car there, they will shuttle me to the airport, while I'm in Florida, they will detail it, which would be wonderful, 'cause my car needs it. So it is an accessory to the parking, the parking is the primary facility, the, the primary use of that is for parking the car while I'm on a flight
Yep.
in conjunction with the airport. That's an allowed use. If they would have transitioned from Hertz to this, not a problem. What they did in the meantime is they used it for a parking lot to park contractor's equipment there while they were cleaning it and detailing it in the bay. That's not what this was, just, that's not an allowed use. It's a subtle difference. Maybe it isn't so subtle, to me, it isn't subtle. It's a, it's a huge change in use. So, by breaking it and, and having that go in there, and they did get a notice of violation that that was in violation, there's some controversy as to who said what to who after the violation notice went out. That, business eventually left shortly thereafter, we have a break, now it's time to get it into compliance.
Mel, and my question, so the fundamental issue is not, not the intended use they want to bring forward this third iteration, it's really, hey, you just need to have a five-foot landscaping setback from your front yard. Right? In, in...
In, in, if, in...
Maybe I'm oversimplifying.
You're, I think there's a step in there that, that needs to be added in. If they'd gone from Hertz to this third person that wants to move in there...
They wouldn't have had...
They wouldn't have had to do anything.
Right, I can understand that, yeah, 'cause the contractor's cleaning
Totally different.
of equipment had nothing to do with the Des Moines Airport.
Right.
I mean, the other uses were related to travelers and temporary parking of cars, this was something that they could have done on Vandelia, where contractors really are.
Right.
But, what, what I'm getting at, so even if they want to do this other use, which I think would probably be normally fine, all you're really saying is, hey, you need to meet the five-foot paving setback from the front property line into your landscaping.
Right.
And, so, to me, that doesn't sound like it should be that big of a deal, that somebody needs to be asking for an exemption. You, we'd still allow, you would allow, allow that use
Yes.
if they just met the setback and a little green space. But, in that case, the front property line is McKinley, and is it also Southwest Twenty-Sixth because we got another street? So they have two
Two front yards.
two front yards. But you wouldn't require any extra landscaping or screening on the side yards or the rear yard?
I'm not gonna get into specifics of what the site plan would require
Okay, because they'd have to get into a new site plan.
They'd have to get into a site plan, and then that would be discussed at the site plan level. I would hate to misspeak.
And, and, and so would this issue, but you're obviously, apparently noting that your nose is on your face, that, hey, you don't have any setbacks now.
Yeah.
And you're gonna at least have to get a variance for that.
Yeah. And I, I'm gonna mark exhibit two and get it put in the record. That's the, the section that talks about non-conforming uses
Sure, okay.
and says, "A use shall be dimmed or banished if such use has been discontinued by the owner of the property makes any change to the property in accordance with the resumption of the use." And so they, they had the use, instead of resuming the use, they changed the use, and now they want to resume the original use, but there's a, there was an inconsistent illegal use in the middle, which catches us in this.
Okay.
So we're, all we're trying to do is get, get some buffer and landscaping and get some improvements to, to that lot and make it, and, and make the improvements on it.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Sue Ann. Applicant, representative of the applicant?
Hi, I'm Juanita Lehman, I live on Merritt Island in Florida. I could bring you a weather report today if you'd like, from down there. I did bring you some pictures, however, if I may give them to you.
If, as long as you, if you can't get them back, then...
No, I know, I don't want them, I, no, thank you very much.
Bert, you want to show them first?
Yeah. Which, just the order? If you want to...
Oh, well, that's the, the... Yeah, I kind of wanted them to see that. Okay, yeah, that's the parking lot, when Hertz had the, the, the lot. What else do you have?
When was that?
Okay, that would have been in, from nineteen seventy-nine on.
Is, is that, that's Southwest Twenty-Sixth, the ditch we're seeing there?
That's right, uh-huh, yeah.
Okay. Is the public right-of-way that wide there, is your property line where the fence is?
Yeah, it's about twenty feet there, yeah.
Really?
Okay. I'd like to give you a little history of the property, Sue Ann did kind of, pretty much, the information that I had given her. In nineteen seventy-four, it was Saunders Truck Leasing. They built the building, it has offices and two bays, one for detailing, one for car washing. And then the parking lot was for their vehicles. And then the parking lot was for their vehicles. We purchased the property in 1979, and at that time, we rented to Des Moines Rent-A-Car. I don't know if any of you are old enough to remember that or not, but...
We won't admit it.
Des Moines Rent-A-Car. And then they sold out to Hertz, and those were our tenants for 33 years. Hated to see Hertz leave, but I guess that's progress when there's a new facility built over on the airport and they are required to move. If you want to lease cars at the airport, you had to be on-site at the airport, so therefore, I lost my tenant. That was pretty devastating, to say the least. I know that's progress and I, I understand that, but right now, I need to keep my property That's a 39-year history for that property, and I would maintain that, yes, even though Sue Ann says no, that it is a parking lot. It's always been a parking lot with detailing. And after Hertz moved out, there was a company that leased it for a period of time, about a year, to park cement trucks. They would bring them into the parking lot and leave them there. Now, you can't detail a cement truck in 30 minutes and you don't run it through a car wash. It takes some time. And I think if you have the packet that I gave, you have a picture of all those trucks on that parking lot. It wasn't just a detailing place, it was a parking lot for cars and he also had truck, for trucks and he also had cars. I've not had a change of use. I haven't been vacant. I know that the law is change of use or vacancy for six months. Not so for me. And it seems to me like for 39 years' history that I've given you that I've owned the property, I ought to have some grandfather rights for so-called non-conforming property. That just seems reasonable to me. In January, I have leased it now to a new tenant who will do, use it as a parking lot and detailing as, as people need it. This does not represent a change of use, but it does represent a change of tenants. I've had to do that. I lost Hertz. And with the new tenant, she talks about maybe cleaning up the corner or making it look better. Yes, with the weather, as it improves, also the building will be improved, the painting, the striping of the parking lot, et cetera, straightening of the fence, so forth. All activities during the time that I have owned that property have been within the parameter of M3, limited industrial zoning. We're surrounded on four sides with commercial and a church parking lot. And I know that the people in the church parking lot are very satisfied with that. We do not have residential properties abutting us. You'll see that that's Southwest 26th. And the entrance to the parking lot is off McKinley, yes, is off McKinley, so that any traffic that this would generate would be going down McKinley, not Southwest 26th. There's nothing in the M3 zoning that says if you change from one permitted use to another that you need a new certificate of occupancy, or that you need to conform to city codes and landscaping. I'll just summarize what I've just said. And as usual as it may seem before this board, my proposal and my appeal are exactly the same, that I be allowed to continue using my property as I have for almost half my lifetime as a parking lot with washing and detailing as an accessory use. Any questions for me? I had all these nice pictures for you. I want to give them to you.
Juanita, I have a couple of questions. You mentioned, what, 39, 40-year history?
I know.
So I take it, you're from Des Moines originally, then?
Uh-huh.
And you lived here and this was...
And I come back every month.
Okay, this was a property, did you like operate it directly, or you had other real estate holdings and you just leased it over that time? Is that right?
This property?
Yeah, yeah.
To Des Moines Rent-A-Car and to Hertz.
All right, so you've owned it, been the landlord there, and leased it for the last 40 years, pretty much?
It's a long time.
It's a long time. Did you build the building there originally?
No, no, Saunders Truck Leasing built that.
Okay, all right, so you bought it from Saunders Truck Leasing?
Yeah.
And then started kind of having the rental parking lot for simplistic terms? Okay, all right. So have you changed the property much in that 40 years? Any additions, improvements of any significance?
Hertz, those two car companies were in there and they were responsible for...
Right, for kind of taking care of stuff. Okay, all right, so you've kind of been the landlord, you rent it to them, and they've run their operation?
And you put them in.
For four decades, okay.
We are now getting it upgraded, and I'm really excited about that because the new tenant is going to do a good job.
Okay.
Already, I see that.
Okay. So I've listened to you, I've listened to Sue Ann. At the end of the day, what's really on the line here? What's on the line for you?
I just want to keep on doing what I'm doing.
Okay.
Without...
And if you would be allowed to keep on doing what you're doing, what's the downside to that? What's the extra, what's, what's the concern you have?
There would be no downside if I can keep on doing what I'm doing.
But if you can keep on doing what you're doing in compliance with the zoning ordinance, according to Sue Ann's interpretation, what's the downside to you for that?
Oh.
I, I haven't heard what's wrong if she says it's not conforming and you've got to meet the new standards.
If you're renting a parking lot?
Yeah.
Every square foot of asphalt represents revenue.
Okay.
I want to be able to pay my taxes, and if you take away any of that asphalt, and I have that 20-foot setback, you could, you know? And across the street at Elliot's, they don't have a bunch of shrubs. And when Hertz was there, we had shrubs along the north side, which this is not in, we're not talking about the north side.
Sure.
But they didn't want the shrubs there because it hid the parking lot and you could get vandalism, and they removed them.
And the shrubs would have been located where at that time?
On the north side, between me and the parking lot for the church.
Okay. Okay, so this might come down to shrubs.
Well, I don't know.
Okay, all right.
I've never been in this position before to know whether it's... But I think tearing up asphalt when you already have that kind of a setback, and there's a lot of green on Southwest 26th, too. A lot of green.
Has the city talked to you about any widening plans for McKinley? Has the city talked to you about any widening plans for McKinley or...
No.
Or anything like that?
No, I think they did that.
It was already, okay.
They actually required for limit.
Okay, okay.
You have any more questions?
No.
Here's not, thank you. Wait one second here. Yeah, that's what I'm... You hear it speaking in support?
Yes.
Yes, I was just getting to that, so, wasn't going to shut you out, Eddie.
I'm going to be short on that. During the year...
Need your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bob Lehman, Merritt Island, Florida. During that period that the company that was detailing automobiles and using the lot to park the inventory until it was ready for service, there was a question about a sign. And so we received a letter and the tenant received a letter concerning a sign that was not within code. So we called the tenant, we talked about it. Then I called Phil Porman at the city, works for Sue Ann. And we discussed the situation, the sign and the, and then he brought up that you've been vacant for six months. And I said, "No, we haven't been vacant." He said, "Oh, really?" He said, "I don't see anybody out there." And so we discussed the sign and the vacancy, or the sign and the, what have I been getting at? The use, okay, the use. He brought up the use. And I explained what was happening, that the company was parking vehicles there, waiting for service for detailing and washing. And so we had quite a conversation on that, and he came back and said to me, "I have no problem with the use as you're doing it now. The only problem I have is with the sign." So then I wrote immediately after the conversation, a memo of record of his conversation with me, that there was no change in use, I have only a problem with the sign. So that was not brought up during the staff presentation.
Do you have that memo?
Yes, just send your pack.
Did you show it to Mr. Porman?
Did I show it to Mr. Porman? No, I didn't show it to Mr. Porman.
Okay, so, so he didn't necessarily say, "Yeah, this is what I told you," and authenticated?
He did not deny it, and it's been in the packet. We wrote to Sue Ann about it, quoted, informed her about the conversation.
Okay.
And so I just want you to know that that's what we were told by the city, and if we can't rely on what the city tells us, who do we rely on? No change in use, is what he said.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? I think there'll be a few questions, Sue Ann. Any last questions for staff?
Chair members of the board, I did see the memo of his recollection of a conversation. I'm not sure when he drafted it. It does not coincide with Phil Porman's recollection of the conversation, so I don't want to get into what he said, she said. I'm only here as to what the facts are that I've determined in the change of use as I went through the review of the use of the property.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I kind of have a leading question here. You say there's been no site plans submitted because they don't think there's been a change in use, so they don't need to submit a site plan. Is that...
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. If somebody submits a site plan to you, do you have the authority to make deals, maybe recommend, waive, or allow certain things that might not be fully in conformance with a brand-new site plan? You kind of see what I'm saying?
Not really.
I mean, are, are site plans, it has to be 100% what the ordinance says in the site planning process, and that's all?
There are certain things regarding the amount of setback from the right-of-way that the board has the ability to reduce.
So you can't make those decisions or deals on your own?
No.
Okay.
I think there are some trade-offs made for numbers of trees versus shrubs.
Sure.
That type of thing, you know, to get the correct canopy, but not necessarily six trees as opposed to 10 shrubs. There's some trade-offs that are made, but setbacks, that is not staff's ability to...
Okay. And another question. If tomorrow, they just decided on the outside of their fence in the right-of-way that they want to plant shrubs or ornamental trees, can they do that?
They cannot use the city right-of-way to satisfy their landscape requirements or their setback requirements, so no.
Okay.
That was a question I had. So the, so the fence is the property line?
Fence is the property line.
Okay, all right. So even if they wanted to dress it up, they can't use your right-of-way to do that to meet your requirements?
They would not meet the requirements for landscaping, no. You can't use city property to meet the requirements. If they wanted to go to the real estate division of the city and say, "Hey, we want to plant 10 trees, we want an areaway permit to do it," that's separate, totally outside of this. They can't, but they can't use that to satisfy.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, could I go slightly out of order and ask the appellate one question?
We haven't closed it yet, so yes.
Okay. Juanita? Juanita, do you have any plans to do any seal coating of the parking lot or any re-striping of the parking lot?
Yes, I don't, but the tenant does. It's George Vatallo that's rented the property.
Okay, okay. Do you have, did you have any kind of site map that showed how they want to stripe it or anything?
Well, it has been striped already. When Hertz had it, it was striped, and you can still see the stripe.
But if they're going to come seal coat it and stuff, they'll re-stripe it again, right?
That's true, but yes, they aren't going to do that.
Okay.
I just have to say one other thing.
I really can't let you do that.
Yeah, because all I had was a question for you and you've answered it.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You had another question?
Nope, no, no, that's the only reason I asked you to come back, is I had a question for you and you have answered it. Thank you.
Okay, can I make one more statement? Thank you.
Close the public portion, go to board decision then. And folks, the first thing we have to do is we have to either approve or disallow the zoning enforcement officer's decision.
I, I would support the zoning enforcement officer's decision. From, from what has been presented, that's the way I feel. I feel like it went from a parking lot to a detailing center and then to a parking lot. So I think it did lose its...
And in my view, I think the same thing. You know, legal non-conforming is not meant to last forever. Sooner or later, they want to bring it in compliance.
Right, right.
Now, if they'd have stayed that way, and that's the reason I asked the question, if it would just park cars there, nothing would have changed, but...
And it's no, it's really no difference than what we see in people who have apartment houses and then they're not rented for a year, and then they want to use them as apartment houses again, and we say, "No, you've lost the right. You have to, you can't do that."
Yeah.
And I think of it, I mean, to me, there's no difference. Unfortunately, it just wasn't used as a parking lot, it was used as a detailing center. And the picture just, I mean, it shows a few trucks, but, but unfortunately, the trucks were just probably brought in to detail and then leave again. So it's not like it was rented out as a whole parking lot.
If I was to...
No, that's your side of town, so...
Well, well, and there, there are some, there's some like larger planning issues. The airport is the gateway to our city. Our commercial and, and corporate flyers come in there. If they fly privately, they're going to come out on McKinley, that's their first view of our entire city. I'd like that corridor to continue to improve as it has. I'd like it to still be able to be usable by the Lehman family as well. Southwestern Hills wrote a letter and said, "Hey, let's get this site cleaned up. It's sitting there empty with trash blowing around now. It looks vacant, there's weeds growing up and stuff." I'd like to see it get used, I'd like the Lehmonds to be able to use it. I'd like to see it improved as well. But aside from that, if we look at the facts here, and we've had this many, many times, well, somebody at the city told me this and that was okay. Unless I see it in a permit in writing, unless I see a letter where it's signed off on, where I can put someone's head on the chopping block, Sue Ann, you said in writing they could do this, so you can't come back now and tell me they can't. If I don't see that, I can't take someone's word for it more than I can what the ordinance tells us in writing, as, e, e, even if I would want to do that. And there is a difference in use here. There's definitely a difference in that kind of use. So I, I would think at a minimum, we'd have to uphold the zoning administrator's determination. There ought to be a way that we can figure out a way to get the site reused thereafter and maybe make it look better. If it's performed for 40 years for someone, there's been some value to that property for them. If there was a statement that the new tenant is going to need to seal coat and therefore they'll need to re-stripe, that's the time to make the change. And if the things were done and moved around properly, I bet you, there'd be a way to meet these requirements, and yes, there'd be some cost, but maybe it doesn't wind up being that expensive. It's going to be costly, but based on the value of the property, the income that it can generate, I would think that pro forma would still work, that it comes out.
Well, can we get a motion out and see where we stand? This is just to uphold the zoning enforcement officer's decision.
I make a motion to uphold the zoning enforcement officer's determination that the property has lost its legal non-conforming rights.
I would second that.
Okay, and moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hold some favor, raise your hand, say aye. That motion carries five to nothing. We now have Part B to consider. Part B is a variance of five feet less than the minimum required five-foot paving setback from a front property line. I think there's a pretty good buffer there now.
Well, yeah, the idea, if we, but if we uphold the zoning officer's determination...
Can we get clarity on what that means?
Pardon?
Can we get clarity on what that impact is? Now that we've handled it that way?
Yeah, yeah. Since we have done that, can we just go, "Well, we're upholding her, but now we're waiving all the requirements that she would have required"? Can we do that?
Well, I think, what Sue Ann said is that she's going, they're going to have to put together a site plan.
Okay.
And including that site plan is the five-foot variance.
But if there isn't a site... But if there isn't a site plan, how do we know there's a five-foot variance? That's what I'm confused with.
And, and that's why, what, what I was after was try to find a way where we get some improvements, but maybe we don't have to have it be Cadillac improvements.
You're right, yeah, yeah, and I'm with you, Mel, on that.
Yeah.
Sue Ann, we've got a few questions here. Where, where do we go with this now?
You have upheld the determination, which without part B would mean they'd have to put in a 10-foot, under the landscape guidelines, the zoning ordinance calls for a five-foot setback. So if you give them a variance, or an exception to the, they'd have to put in five feet.
So what's this 10-foot you just referenced?
That's part of the landscape requirement.
Okay, but we could give them a variance of five foot, so they'd only need to put in five foot? Is that what you're telling me?
No, if you, if you grant the variance, they're, they give, they get exactly what they have, and they wouldn't have to put anything in. If you want them to put in a five foot, you have to deny part B.
Okay. What, what else would you make them do, since we upheld part A, though, besides this five foot?
Trees and shrubs along the.
Where? Just, just on the frontages? So you're okay with the back lot and the center?
Interior parking, or interior landscaping.
That's, that's, that's what I'm getting at. That's what I'm getting at. So is there any way we can put all that on the table and try to come up with a way?
Those are landscape standards, which are part of the site plan ordinance, and the zoning board of adjustment doesn't have purview over the site plan ordinance. That would be.
Okay, so, so you don't let us do that, but, but you'll let us say, eh, on the frontage, we'll, we'll waive all that, and they don't have to do anything?
Even if this board waives the, waives the five-foot zoning setback, they would still have to get waiver of the 10-foot landscaping setback.
From who?
From either the community development director.
Okay.
He probably wouldn't go that far, he'd probably want the plan and zoning commission to consider that.
So we just kick the can down the road a little bit further down?
Well, let me ask this. Does the city support the variance of five feet less? I mean, does everybody?
No, that's, that's on their report, that's.
See, I'd, I'd rather turn this inside out. I'd, I'd rather see the frontage look a little better, and then skip the interior islands and, and the little mushroom U-shaped things, you know, around parking islands, and get rid of all that, and say, hey, on your backyard, you got trees, I ain't worried about that. But you're telling us, since we can't kind of quid pro quo this.
Right, yeah, and that's why we only put the variance on there, because that's really the only, the variance and setback is the only thing.
That you have authority over.
Zoning-wise, it's the site ordinance that's.
Good, kicking their ass.
The, the thing that Juanita mentioned, too, would she have to tear out concrete to put that in?
To meet the five-foot.
Yeah?
The zoning setback, she would have to.
And seeing, that's the issue that I had.
Right, right. But if we go ahead and grant the variance, and maybe that's on the table, they'll probably have to turn around, and they're going to have to tear up interior concrete to meet your new site plan requirements.
And, and if they don't get waiver of the 10-foot perimeter setback, then they're going to have to rip up 10 feet anyway, even if the board grants them five feet.
But if we make them make a deal with us to do the five-foot of landscaping today, it's, it still doesn't negate what he just said.
If you, if you gave them, if you told them that they had to do the five foot, it may carry weight with the P and Z, or the administrative staff that says, okay, they're putting in the five foot.
Wow. I wish we could get us all in the same room, because that's what I'd want to do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to agree.
Because I kind of feel like we'll cut off our nose despite our face if we.
I don't have any problem going to staff and saying, we've got the five foot, let's see what we can work out. I mean.
Okay. I mean, and I hope the Lehmonds understand this, too. In the 21st century now, I mean, we'd like to improve our corridors, and there's a need for parking, there's a need for secure parking, but, you know, that's a chain-link fence with wire on the top. There'd be, and I'd like to see that buffered, pun intended, to a certain degree. But just to get that, I feel like then we'll, and, and I understand the reasoning, but, but we'd drag them down a further course of action that's even more restrictive. So, I don't know. I, I guess I, I liked what Sue said, if we, depending on what we would decide, that at least some of our discussion could have some weight in what they negotiate, recommend, or discuss at staff and other board levels.
Well, since this is being recorded, at least we have something to fall back on.
Yeah.
All right, let's, uh.
Is that that funny?
We have verification. Let's, uh, let's put a motion out here. I know it's a tough one.
I mean, is there any more discussion, you all?
I think we know what we got to do, yeah.
I like where Mel's going, I'm just interested in how do we put that into.
Right, because I'd like, I'd like to give them some concern, but I really feel when you come in here, you know, if, if you're going to argue about two things, you might be prepared to give on one to get your other.
Right. If the board does not uphold, but we did uphold, the zoning administrator's determination.
Which we had.
Yeah, I think that wording is wrong.
Or no word.
We did uphold that.
Yes. But, but now do we give them?
The staff recommends denial, but.
Right.
We did uphold it, so that's where I was coming from with, now do they mean that they do approve that?
So now we're talking about part B, the variance, we, we'd allow them to keep the five foot less.
The board does not uphold the zoning administrator's determination, but we did uphold it.
That was part A.
Part B doesn't even come into play if you don't uphold it.
Part B doesn't even.
If you didn't uphold the decision, it stops.
Yeah, because you can keep your paving to the line, nothing's changed.
Then everything stays the same.
Okay, all right, there we go.
So, that's why B is under consideration, is because you did uphold it.
Okay.
Okay.
So to keep the conversation flowing, what if I would put forward proposal to deny the part B, to deny a variance of five foot less than the minimum required five-foot paving setback from a front property line?
Mm-hmm.
Wherein they'd be required then to meet some green space requirements. However, along with that denial, a strong recommendation that the city consider compliance with this five foot in any further discussions on site plan review and improvements therein.
I don't think that would have any legal effect.
Okay. Right, it may not have a legal effect, but it's just, you know, nice suggestion.
Can I do either or? I mean.
So Mike, are, are you saying I should just make it a little simpler, then?
Well, they've applied for a variance.
Right, and, and I'm just, yeah, okay, okay. All right, I, I think I've put.
Let me ask one other question. I got one other idea. Sue Ann? Hear me out on this. If, if we were to grant the variance, yet you could talk to plan and zoning and say, well, if they don't take advantage of that variance that we granted and put trees there, we can probably work around some other issues on the, on the site plan. Would that have the same effect, or would you rather see the variance denied?
I'd rather see the variance denied and have us work out whatever we can afterwards, so at least we get five foot.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so let, let me clarify, then, you know, it may sound harsh here, but I want to put a motion out there to deny the variance of five foot less than the minimum required five-foot paving setback from a front property line.
Yep, and I think Sue Ann knows what we're thinking, so. Do I hear a second? I'll second. Every now and then I got to do that. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of denying the variance, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Motion carries five to nothing. Okay, item 14 is a variance at vicinity of 1813 Delaware.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this item is a request for a variance of 25 feet less than the minimum required, 25-foot setback required for three of the property lines surrounding a, a storage yard for outside materials. The subject property is located on the east side of Delaware Avenue, across from the 3E industrial use. The subject property is, is already zoned M1. It was rezoned to the industrial classification a few years back when a bus terminal was looking to relocate on the site. That bus terminal never happened, but the site is still zoned M1 with some zoning conditions. The properties to the north are both zoned CO, which is a commercial residential district. They're both actually used for parking lot uses right now. And then the properties to the east are all zoned single-family residential, and are all used for single-family residential uses. Here's the site sketch that they've provided. They would want to have it for outside storage, they would be storing materials on pallets and then taking them across Delaware Avenue to their main facility. The use is a permitted use in the M1 district, it's just subject to some setback requirements. The M1 district requires a 25-foot setback from any residential district and from any CO district, which are adjacent to the north and the south. They are, the applicant has indicated they want to provide the required 25-foot front yard setback, so really we're only looking at the north, east, and west setbacks. Here's some photos of the site today, it's just a undeveloped lot, a few overstoryed trees are there. This is looking to the north from one of the parking lots to the south. Look at it to the northeast. You can see right now there's a six-foot tall fence along the property line. When this use goes in, they will be required to provide a six-foot tall, solid fence to screen the outside storage in any locations where there isn't already a fence, so. Here's one more site photo, and then the consent map. Houses adjoining are most concerned, and then the property across on the other side of the street is in support. Staff does believe that the 25-foot setbacks are reasonably necessary, since they would be storing materials on pallets, likely have forklifts and other equipment that might make beeping noises or have loud engines. So just given the close proximity to these houses, we do feel that a 25-foot setback is reasonable, especially along the east property line, and maybe not so much from the north and south, but we definitely feel that a 25-foot setback is necessary from the east property line, so. We are recommending denial of it. In the staff report, I put just some calculations on the square foot that's allowed right now, and then the square versus the square footage of storage area that would be available if they meet the five, or the 25-foot setback, so. Right now, let's see. If they meet the 25-foot setbacks, they would have a 20,500 square foot area. However, if the board grants the variances, that would give them a 32,000 square foot area, so really that's a net gain of 56, or 56.6%. And that's really the reason they're wanting this variance, is because it is a pretty significant increase in the allowable or usable area. And then I also put the option on here, if the board grants an exception level of relief, which is 12 and a half feet less than the required 25 feet, so that they would have a 12 and a half foot setback from the north, east, and south property lines, that would give them an increase of 5,488 square feet, so. Just a couple options, but again, staff has, we do believe that the 25-foot setbacks are necessary, which, again, having the 25 setback, foot setback, so it'd still leave them with 20,500 square feet of usable area.
Well, Bert, will they still, let's, let's say they were willing to meet the 25-foot setback. I see there on the front, would they be required to do any other screening or landscaping?
Yeah, any areas used for outside storage will have to be screened by at least a six-foot tall screen.
So this plan doesn't represent any improvements, it just represents what's there now with the tree cover and everything?
Before, they went to go to the expense of preparing a site plan, they wanted to know.
Sure, okay. So they kind of understand they'll have to make the property look better as a whole to, to, to meet this? Okay. It's just this square footage is there, is the issue?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks, Bert. Apprington, represented the applicant?
J.D. Pilmer, Electrical Engineering Equipment, 1808 Delaware, Des Moines, Iowa. My plan is what, the reason I acquired this property was to move the equipment that I have stored on my property right here, and it, and it goes into my property, there's quite a bit of equipment. What I'm going to do is, is put a lot in here and put a fence all the way around it, and move the equipment across the street, and that way, what I'm going to do is, is we're running out of room in our existing facility right now, and we're going to add on to our facility in the, in the, in the future, after we get everything all done with this lot. What I plan on doing is, is putting a fence all the way around the lot, like, like it was mentioned before. I did get a call from a Sheila Hernandez, who's, which is one of the neighbors in this area right here, asking what I was going to do, and I told her that, what my plans were, and then I was going to put up a new fence. She was pretty excited about it, because she said she had been saving money for two years to put a new fence up, and so she was really excited about that. She was also excited about me cleaning the property up, because it was, would significantly reduce the snake population in her backyard, so.
Non-poisonous, but.
I, I hope so, I don't know. But anyway, that, that was the only call I did get from your mailer that, that the city sent out, and basically, that's what the plan is. Any questions?
Mel, you, you realize you'll have to, what, what kind of dustless surface would you be proposing? You going to pave this thing?
Uh, no, I think the recommendation was recycled asphalt.
Okay, all right, okay. Would you be paving the driveway and kind of like major lanes or approaches on the site?
Yeah, probably the approaches, the approaches into the lot.
Yep.
Yeah, I would be paving those.
Okay, all right. And then, you know, if this all works out, then you mentioned across the street, although it's not part of what we're here for necessarily.
Right.
If you expand your property over there, which sounds like a good idea, you realize that'd probably trigger some building permit landscaping requirements as well over there?
Right.
Okay, so you're looking at improvements all the way around here, kind of?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Uh, we've been at the facility for, I think, at 1950, I think, is when the facility was, was, when we acquired it.
Okay.
I've been there for 40 years, I've been with the company for that long, so.
And if you think way back, 40 years, was this lot ever developed at that time? Was it ever used for parking, or you just have to scrub the?
I've, I've never, the 40 years I've been there, I've never.
Never been developed.
It's always been like this.
Been the way.
And it's, it's this, this photo does it justice, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty bad shit.
And I've, I've seen it.
There's a lot of debris around there, and.
If, if we decide, you know, to deny this, you got to have that 25 feet around it, but as staff mentioned, you know, if we wanted to grant what was called, I think, the maximum exception, that'd be 12 and a half feet. Would that be something maybe you could live with, if there was still a setback, but it was half of what is being requested here?
Brad Geter, 1360, with McClure Engineering. We've been retained by J.D. to look at the site from a site plan perspective. We've done full topo.
Yep.
We've done a tree study, we're well underway on that part of it.
Sure.
The site obviously presents some unusual challenges.
Yes.
That, you all know what we're talking about, the grade actually is actually really pretty flat. Even grain, the variance is, is part of the issue.
Okay.
The other part of the issue is our nearest storm sewer is there.
Okay.
So as part of the stormwater, it's an interesting part of the site plan, we're going to present a unique challenge in, in meeting current stormwater rates, et cetera. Right now, preliminary version is, we intend on putting a detention area.
Okay.
To meet the site plan in that area, so while we get the variance, we're probably not going to end up putting much of stored materials in that area, but we want to maintain the access coming across the street, paved into recycled material, obviously. And depending on the depth of storm sewer, rain event, et cetera, this detention pond may wrap around. may wrap around near the fence in order to meet that, that requirement.
So are you kind of telling me you'll have a setback anyway?
We will, but just to optimize the site plan, the site for the, for the client, we're requesting the variance.
You don't want to paint yourself in a corner?
Yes.
Okay.
It's already a challenging site the way it is.
Okay.
And, and obviously, you know, the, the materials are stored and are...
Sure.
It's not chemicals. It's generators, et cetera.
Sure.
You know, finished product from all materials.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
How long, how long is your company on this lot?
I think I purchased it last year.
And, and the other owner, although it wasn't developed, they just sit on it for decades or had it been a longtime owner?
It's changed hands quite a few times.
It has. Nobody's just stepped up.
Mark Industry had it for a while, and then I can't remember who else had it.
Okay.
The other thing I would mention is not only obviously the trees don't do it justice. Bert had a, had a, in his example, American fencing, although it's a different zoned use.
Yep.
It's already doing that exact thing right there.
Right. Didn't we grant some things around there? That's okay. Don't worry about it.
Honestly, no. That's just the same type of use.
Sure.
That's the point.
Good point.
We're going to, as mentioned, we're going to comply with the Delaware landscaping zoning.
Okay.
You know, we're going to shrub and tree.
Sure.
All the frontage via landscaper, et cetera.
Okay.
Outside his fence, outside the proposed fence.
All right.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition?
Finally, it's been a long meeting.
Sometimes it feels like it, doesn't it?
My name's Gary Pitts. I'm the manager of GNS Investments. We own a property at 1918 East 21st. Our address is 800 Hartford. I hate to say I'm really in opposition to this because after I've heard them speak, I'm not so much opposed to it. My property is not immediately adjacent, or I am just speaking for 1904 East 21st, which is Julian Hannamell that owns that property. I did have some concerns, and he already addressed one of them, was water runoff. It is a very flat property, so I'm concerned about, on some of my other properties, I had problems with people building something next door and then blocking my runoff. So I was concerned about this recycled asphalt, what level that's going to be, but if he's going to have retention ponds, it's going to drain into that. I'm, I'm less concerned about that. The other thing was screening. Fans, I was concerned about any kind of a structure that might be built there. If it's not going to be any structure, then if it's just going to be like a flat parking lot area, I'm less concerned about that, too. And the fence is already there, and it would be good if it was a new fence and, and in better shape than what the one is that's there now. So like I say, I hate to say that I'm in opposition to it. I think it'll be an improvement on the property, but I am concerned about some of these things I've mentioned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I just ask him a quick question?
I'll tell him.
Can you point to where your property, or your friend's property is there just by looking at the map? And you can just point your finger on the map there, and it'll, we'll see your finger up there.
Julian lives at 1904.
Okay.
Right here.
Okay.
My property is at 1921, or 1918, which I think two properties down. I can't, I don't see the addresses on here, so it's hard to see.
Okay. All right.
So...
Have you had issues with water in your basement or that sort of thing in the?
Yes, we have.
Yeah.
Quite a bit. It's, it's not a basement, it's a crawl space. And what we've been able to do is build up around the entry points at the crawl space and keep the water out. But yeah, we've lost a couple of hot water heaters and stuff like that in the past.
I have some big concerns.
But that's just a general concern you have. It's not because of this property now causing you to agree for anything, is it?
No, not because of this particular property. It's just the general lay of the area.
Kind of the neighborhood, the lay of the land.
And, and coming here, I was concerned about any water, what they were going to, I wasn't sure what they were going to do with the property for sure.
Sure.
And, but if they do put in some kind of retention pond with a drainage system in it, then that, that should take care of the problem.
All right.
Good.
We appreciate your comments. Thanks for waiting.
Appreciate your patience. I know, till the last minute, and then...
Okay.
Just a ticket.
That's right. Anybody else here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? Hearing none?
Hang on, Mr. Chair. Sorry for not being attentive. One question for staff. What, what's the, if we so choose, what's the maximum amount of relief that, that we can grant?
Well, you could grant them a variance of 25.
The whole thing.
All 25.
Okay.
Less than 25.
Okay.
That's how we noticed it.
Okay. Just that you kind of just gave us a hint, though, in looking at exceptions, it's no more than half of the, of what's required.
Right. I was just giving you some, yeah, some options on what, how much usable area directions would leave them with, so...
All right.
Any other?
Nope.
Okay. We'll close the public portion and go to board decision then.
Well, this is my neighborhood. So I'm, I want to see that property improved. I am concerned about East 21st. I'm, I do not like the idea of being able to butt up right up to that property line. So I want to see some sort of relief. I was going to oppose it completely, but if I had some assurances that there were going to be some retention ponds and some buffering, but I, I don't want to see it bumped, bumped right up there. I think that that's too much asphalt for the neighborhoods. I think that it is flat. That water's got to go somewhere. And I don't think that it's fair to cause the neighbors on East 21st, who live there, problems with water just because somebody who's got a business puts in a, you know, a big parking lot. So I, honestly, I would like to see it denied, just as city staff recommends. That would be my first choice, but I don't know how the other board members feel. Maybe there's some compromise there, but we've, we've got to have some buffering. Like he said when he made the city's presentation, you've got machines, you've got, you know, the beep, beep, beep constantly. There just needs to be some buffering there.
Mel? I, I see what Linda's got out here. One thing I do want to reiterate, if we're concerned about surface water, storm water flow, they have to address that. That, that's not really anything for us to be concerned about here because they have to meet a site plan requirement. Now, if we were just talking at garage where the guy wants the one-foot variance, and we say, well, where's your gutter downspout coming out? Those things don't have to meet storm water requirements, I don't believe, in general, those small things. So that's why we've discussed those. But here, they have to meet storm water flow requirements. They can't send water off the site. So I kind of think that's an issue that they're going to take care of. I don't think we need to worry about that. The idea of the buffer, maybe 25 feet, boy, that's, you know, I could swing a few cats within that. That's, that's quite a, that's quite a buffer. Maybe if it was, you know, 12 and 1/2, you know, staff put out there, well, gee, that, that cuts it down in half. Maybe a 10-foot, you could still drive a forklift behind it then to get to the pallet from the backside. Or if, if there was a problem or generator overheated, I don't know why it would, but it wouldn't burn the fence down then. Or you could control weeds and stuff. A little buffer wouldn't hurt. And probably on a quarter of this lot, you're going to have that by default. What about like a 10-foot setback?
I'm game.
What, 1250?
I think 10-foot.
12 and 1/2, you know, we're splitting a foot, six and, you know, eh, 10, 12 and 1/2. And, and another positive thing, the house is front to 21st Street. We're looking at backyards. We're not looking at front and side yards here. And most of the houses are toward the front. And it'll look better, though. I have screening. You know, and I, sometimes I editorialize, but in our last case, nobody wanted to do anything. In this one, they're going to make an improvement to the property, they're going to add jobs, they're going to add tax base, and they're going to improve this lot, unless Charter Oak was over here and we needed to save that, but I don't think so.
No, and then, yeah, at the same time, they're going to be taking the storage from across the street and putting it, heightening it better.
Yeah.
So I can see improvement like in the whole entire area.
Right. Right. And, and it sounds like the appellant's already aware that, yeah, we just can't build on on the other place and not address some landscaping and, and, you know, it's like they're well-prepared and want to do this.
But I do agree that you can eat a buffer, eat anything, but eat directly to the fence.
Right.
I just think that's way too close.
So Mel, you want to put it out?
Can we ask the, is it fair to ask the appellant, could they live with that?
Sure.
Or would the whole project fail? And maybe that's too much to ask, but...
I don't, I don't see it as an issue.
I need you up here. Thank you.
I mean, it, it may just help reinforce a vote one way or the other.
Brad Geter, McClure Engineering, 1360. I don't know that it's going to be that big of an issue, just to give them maximum flexibility with, with what they've already stored across the street.
Sure.
Or trying not, like you said, to use your term, box ourselves in a corner to wear.
Right.
You know, and you're talking about...
It's not worth doing.
It's not a permanent storage scenario either, such that, that even if the variance were granted, these materials don't sit for years and years. They, they cycle their materials through, so it's a temporary basis is the other reason for the, for the, for the variance.
Right.
I guess part of the question is, and we'll work this out as part of the site plan.
Right.
We intended on putting the fence right on the property line as a natural screen anyway.
Yeah.
As opposed to setting the fence back from 10, you know, 10 feet.
Right.
And so, you know, without, without a maintainable surface up against the fence, obviously, we have detention along that area, that, that's our concern.
You've got a mow, it'll get...
Yes, it's got to be mowed, and we've got some natural site plan things we've got to address for the client.
Right.
To make sure they can, they can, the site performs the way they want.
The flip side, if there's any incidental runoff, then at least you'd have a minor captures on there.
Yes.
So, you know, to go to what Linda and the other guys are talking about.
The storm sewer adjacent is very shallow.
Okay.
So the feasibility of this is starting to get into, almost in question from day one.
Okay.
We may be, come out, the city has a hardship because the storm sewer is only about two and 1/2 foot deep. So how do you, how do you?
Really much rule element.
Doesn't give you a lot of free board to...
Store.
To store, to store your water. So this site has definite challenges to it.
Okay. But potentially, the, the 10-foot would not sink the project by itself, unintended.
No, no. It would definitely, you know, a waiver of some sort would definitely, would definitely help the situation.
Good.
I could live with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So let's put it out there.
Okay. Well, I would make a motion to grant a variance of 15 feet less than the minimum required 25-foot side yard setback, and also to grant a variance of 15 feet less than the minimum required 25-foot rear yard setback.
Then I'll say...
Okay. It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Aye. Motion carries five to nothing.
So he gets his 10 feet. I saw the applicant kind of look there. He gets his 10 feet.
Yeah.
The way he worded it, yes.
Yeah.
He was talking about 10-foot setback.
Yeah. Yeah. You wind up, okay.
Thank you.
You bet.
Wow. We've got a lot of people sitting here for the last...
I'm not going to vote for the city. Turn the heat up. It's cold in here.
Last item is, item 15, an exception at 350 East Locust.
Bert, you're not asking for any landscaping variances, are you?
On this one?
Yeah.
No.
Item number 15 is a request for an exception to the maximum allowed height for a mixed-use building in the Capitol Dominance Overlay District. The subject property is located at the northwest corner of East Fourth Street and East Locust Street. The East Village area that this site is in is zoned what's called the Capitol Dominance Overlay. And it's really an overlay district that sets maximum height restrictions on buildings with the purpose of protecting and preserving views of the state capitol. This area, or the sites in an area of the overlay district that limits building heights to 55 feet. However, there is a caveat that if all portions of the building above 55 feet are used for residential, that they're allowed to have a maximum height of 75 feet. In this instance, the applicant's proposing a five-story mixed-use building, commercial on the first level, residential on levels two, three, and four, and then the fifth-story penthouse suite would actually be a commercial use. So the portion of the building that's above 55 feet is used, would be used for commercial purposes, which is what triggers the need for this exception. Here's the elevations that they've provided. It would be an attractive building at that corner. And I just quickly go through these photos. I have some site photos that show, again, the purpose of the overlay district is to preserve views of the capitol. So this is looking up Locust, East Locust Street, towards the capitol. The building would be right here, so you can see that the views from East Locust Street would not be diminished from the proposed building. Here's another site photo. The building would be here to actually cover up and screen the backside of this existing building here to the north. I also point out that this building here is already 75 feet tall. It was allowed to be 75 feet because the upper portions are used for residential purposes. So the proposed 68-foot tall building would be a little bit shorter than that building there. This is just looking to the north from East Locust. Another view from the River Bridge, probably hard to see, but you can see the top of that six-story building next door to the site that I was just showing you right here. So if you just picture, the new building would be about, would it be seven or eight feet less than that building here? Again, from the river, the view of the capitol wouldn't be impacted by this building either. Then this is looking from the Metro Waste Authority's parking lot to the south. You can see SoHo here. SoHo, actually, the tip of this is 75 feet as well. The majority of the building, I believe, is 57 or 58 feet, but the tip of that corner feature does go up to 75 feet. You can see that the SoHo building already blocks the view of the capitol for the most part from this property to the west. So the proposed building wouldn't have that significant of an impact. Here's the consent map. Few of the cards in opposition were from the condo owners within the SoHo Lofts building. From staff's perspective, we feel they've demonstrated the criteria necessary for granting the exception. We feel it's appropriate. Just to point out that if these portions of this building above 55 feet were used for residential, they wouldn't even be here today. But because they want to have the commercial use on the top floor, that requires them to come before this board. Overall, we feel it's a good project. We're supportive. So we've recommended approval subject to three conditions. One, the portion of the building that is over 55 feet in height shall have a footprint that's set back from the fourth floor of the building. I didn't point it out, but as you can see from the elevations, the penthouse suite of the fifth floor would actually be set back about eight feet from the edge of the building. So we feel that that is an appropriate architectural feature. The conditions two and three are just standard. Two, that they have to meet the building codes, and three, they need to comply with Two, that they have to meet the building codes, and three, they need to comply with the site plan ordinance. Any questions?
Who's, who owns this?
The City of Des Moines owns it right now, and they've been entering into a purchase agreement with a different entity. I can let them explain it. Tim Rittma was here, he's one of the partners of the proposed development group.
Wasn't the president staged there that night for the, when he won the second election?
I think that was in the interchange.
Okay, all right.
They might have used...
So, we're not proposing a national historic landmark for the site or anything? Bert, would there be any air handling units or any AC that would stick up above this yet? Does that have to be taken into account?
I'd let the project's architect address that, but there are ordinances that require, if there are air handling up there, they would have to be screened. I would imagine on a project like this, they'd want it architecturally integrated.
Yeah, and I'm guessing they are, but if they did, that doesn't necessarily count against the height of the building, you just then have to screen it thereafter.
Right.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? Thanks, Bert. Applicant, representative of the applicant?
Members of the board, Tim Rittma, East Village Growth Partners, 2404 Forest Drive, Des Moines, Iowa. I'm here representing East Village Growth Partners. We are currently presenting this project. I think it's important to state, you know, the plan from day one is to really make this property fit in with neighboring properties. To the west, which is the Metro Lox Building, it's roughly a, you know, three-story building, to our elevation to the west, kind of lines up with that property, as you can see. And then, to the north, which is 333 East Grand, our property lines up to there, you know, it roughly lines up, we're a little shorter, but lines up to that height. And then also to the east, lining up with SoHo Development's top piece. Because of our use of commercial space on the, or office penthouse on the top floor, we, any space above 55 feet has to come in front of your board if it's something for other residential, so that's why we're here today.
How, um, thank you, Mr. Chair, sorry. Are you looking at any, then, air handling units or anything on top of the building thereafter?
Yeah, as you mentioned that earlier, I asked, I can have my architect, Jim Trower, speak to that. Jim, do you want to quickly make sure to introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Jim Trower with Newman-Montsen Architects, 1000 Walnut Street, Des Moines, Iowa, 50309. Each unit will have, each residential unit will have its own unit within the space. The first-floor retail will also have HVAC, HVAC units within the space. The penthouse potentially could have the units within the space, or it could be on the roof. There are condensers for the air conditioning that are not significantly tall, but any units on the roof would be screened. We would want to minimize that as much as possible.
Sure, okay. So, you know, and I'm not trying to nail you down too far here, but it's not like you'd have to have another five-foot perimeter fence around the whole perimeter of the building, necessarily. You might have a couple of units up there, and then you just kind of box them in?
Yep, to my knowledge, yes.
Okay, all right. And when you mentioned that the residential units have their own, then they vent out the side somehow of the building, is that right?
Yes, you'd have to have fresh air intake.
Right, okay, all right.
Any other questions?
What's the height of the SoHo building?
72 is, I believe, I was...
Tip was 75.
Tip was 75.
And that's just the portion of that, so what, the tip's 75? What's the majority of that?
Well, yeah, I, I... Go ahead, Bert.
I looked at the twin from when it was built back in 2004, and the tip was 75 feet, and the bulk of it was, I believe, 58, 57 and a half, 58, somewhere in that range. So, this would be about...
And you're 68, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you have any plans for underground parking, or...
The, let me flip through this. The same ownership, well, a member that is an owner of East Village Growth Partners is also the owner of this parking lot right here. We are under agreement, understanding right now at this point, to allow our tenants to park there. So, parking is not required by the city for this use, however, we will have parking available for our tenants.
And the way that parking lot is now used, is there some capacity left?
Yeah.
For tenants?
Yeah, it's about 30% occupied right now.
Okay, all right.
It's mostly occupied by Metro Waste employees.
Right, okay, okay. Who's got that big unlandscaped parking lot to the west there, a whole block of it? It's late in the day.
Watch out for the...
Just kidding, guys, just kidding.
Not ours.
Yeah, good answer.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in support?
Several of us.
Great.
I just came from recreation, man.
I hope you're having fun. I kind of think he is.
I'm Marcia Steele, business owner in the East Village at 520 East Grand Avenue for the last eight years. I'm here in favor and full support of Tim's project and the request for the height variance for the building. This particular lot's been vacant for eight years. The neighborhood has proposed parks and informational centers, and none of it generates tax revenue and didn't meet with the city's requirements, so we're really hopeful that this could actually infill an ISO, as well as providing retail, which is in dire need, and residential. I think we're at 98% occupancy in the East Village, so Tim's building would be providing that. Small, but mighty. Currently, it's pretty much a dog-walking area with lots of landmines, and it's the joke of the neighborhood. Tim's building will have a maintained green area for dogs and vastly improve that lot right now. Many other five- and six-story buildings and parking provided for, so I would urge you strongly to please pass this so that it can go to the state for CDBG funding. Questions?
Sounds good. Thanks for sticking around. Support? Support, yes.
Well, I hate to lengthen the meeting, but I sat here also darn long.
You've earned it.
You've earned it.
My name is Carl Voss. I live at 323 East Fifth in the East Village. I've lived there since 2000, before any of these buildings were built, before it was even called the East Village. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm here to support this infill building. I was actually a member of the Historic Neighborhood Investment Corporation that built the building at 333 Grand. We were displeased that the southern exposure of that building is not what we'd like to see, because there was going to be a building there. Now, with the completion of this building, this will be a great addition to the neighborhood with more people that will live here and shop here, and they'll even get a chance to use the B-cycle bike-share program, which is currently using a small square of this space. It'll be moved temporarily, and there'll be a new space for the bike-share program in the East Village, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. An interested observer.
I'm Mike Draper, downtown resident at 100 Water Street, it's right over there. And I also own Raygun, which is right there. So, we face, we face this lot. I'm in full support of the building being built. I was actually the person who spearheaded the entire neighborhood being changed from C3 to C3B zoning, so I am frighteningly familiar with the zoning code of the East Village and what it, what it's meant to intend. The basis of changing it to C3B was to make sure that all existing buildings kind of meet the character of the neighborhood, which I think this one meets. It's retail on the ground floor, apartments on the upper floor. I talked to, one of the residents upstairs was here earlier, and she was actually here in support of the building as well, the, who lives above me, she owns her space. I haven't met anybody upstairs who actually lives in their unit, who's opposed to this project, and I know all of the stores on the ground floor are in favor of it, so I'd like to see the variance approved. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Josh Garrett. I'm the current president of the Historic East Village and a new downtown resident, and also I own a business at 503 East Locust Street, just right over here. So, I just wanted to stop by and let you know, we did write a letter of support, the HEB did, to support this project, and we had five reasons why, and just wanted to go and reiterate those. The first one was it provides new affordable and market-rate housing in the center of the East Village. The second one was that it provides first-floor retail and restaurant base on Locust Street, which are becoming more and more in demand, as we are using all of it or getting close to it. The third thing was, Tim's plan also includes lead certification and the retention of the B-cycle kiosk on the premises once it opens. And, well, the fourth one we had was the capital dominance overlay district guidelines were met, but we are here asking for a variance to that. But then the fifth one is the fact that the lot has been sitting empty for several years. It's a black eye on our community, and it will cover up 333 East Grand, and with a great-looking building that definitely deserves the disaster recovery funds that it's requesting. So, we just wanted to let you know the HEB does support this project, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion, go to board decision.
As the Ward Four representative, which I think this lies in, I would move staff recommendation for approval of the exception, subject to the conditions noted. Second.
It moved in second, it is a former Eastside boy that, this used to be my stomping grounds, I could...
It's changed, Bill.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy, I can tell you some stories.
Would you love they cleaned it up?
Been moved in second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Motion carries five to nothing. Great job, folks.
Can we clap?
Yes. I'll even give a clap. We got the meeting, minutes?
Minutes. I'll move approval of the minutes.
Those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Motion carries. Any other last comments? Hearing none, we close. Meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everybody, great job.